Mayor Steinberg, we're ready when you are.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll so that we might establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Chenier?
Here.
Councilmember Guetta?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
I expect Councilmember Ashby momentarily, and Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here. Very good. Welcome to all of you. Would everyone who please can rise, please rise. I'd ask Councilmember Alan Warren to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That makes about four times you've asked me this year. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You know what? You're an honored colleague here, so thank you.
And Mayor Steinberg, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby has joined us.
All right, very good. We have a full city council, and we obviously have a lengthy agenda tonight and and some very important items about the future of our city and its governance to discuss. But let us begin with the consent calendar. I know Councilmember Chenier would like to pull items four and 10 for discussion. Are there any other items that members want to either pull or take separately?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on item 17.
Okay. Do you want to do that right now?
Sure. Item 17 is the item with the Sierra Health Foundation, Healing the Hood. Earlier today, I had a conversation with Chet Hewitt, the CEO of the Sierra Health Foundation, about services to the Marina Vista-Alder Grove community, which is our public housing assets off of Broadway. We've seen an uptick in gang violence and other issues at the community, and especially given that our schools are closed, there's been a lot of other needs there. So I spoke to him about how to incorporate those communities into this plan as we did with the Black Child Legacy effort, and he was very gracious and offered to help work with us and the service providers to ensure that community was included. And so I just wanted to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with that comment. And I appreciate the partnership we have with Sierra Health and the other service providers so that we can move forward not only with Healing the Hood, but in the ultimate goals of our social equity programs. And I'm sorry I missed last week when that debate happened, but I appreciate all the work of my colleagues on this item.
Second.
So the consent calendar with the exception of item four and 10. Okay.
Thank you. May I take a roll call vote?
Is there any public testimony? I've got an echo on my.
I don't have any public comment on the consent calendar.
Okay, then please, please call. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Consent calendar passes with the exceptions of item four and 10. Councilmember Chenier, you wanted to talk about item four.
I do, Mayor. Thanks very much. I think this is incredibly important, and we need to move as quickly as possible on this. I have talked to staff about two items that are of concern. One is the timing on this. And I want to make sure that we can provide direction on this, that if we can go down to 10 days as far as turning around the NOFA, that would be great, as long as we can do that within the parameters set by the federal government. We should be okay. If we wait too long, there's no point at all. So that's number one. Number two is that clearly as we get proposals in, this will cover both young people and adults. Young people, in this case, being defined as persons up to 24 years old. But there's no guarantees on either end of that. And what I'd like to do is provide direction that a minimum of 25% of the jobs that are the workforce development money goes out for youth, which is, again, up to 24 years old. So to take care of that population, that one of the populations that's most in need. So that would be the direction that I'd like to put in.
It's at least 25%. Are there comments from members?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The only thing that I have some concern about, and maybe, you know, Councilmember Chenier, if you don't mind talking a little bit about it, I wonder what the, how this would balance out. I know we have some programs like the Health Worker Program that we're trying to do to get outreach into various communities about COVID-19. There's other workforce programs about, you know, ensuring that folks have opportunities for working in the industrial community, in the industrial jobs that are still recruiting and looking to hire folks. So I guess I want to look at how we balance, you know, in situations where we have heads, you know, heads of households who are trying to get employment at the same time as we are with youth. And I get the opportunity of 18 to 24 is a big category who's also unemployed at the moment. So can you talk a little bit about how we can balance those two demands?
Yeah, I don't see very much coming out of this on the high school front. Really, the 18 to 24 could fit certainly those jobs that you were just talking about. On the proposals that we have in hand that have passed the COVID eligibility, CARES eligibility test, about 30% of them were around youth, again, defined up to 24. So this basically just says, but let's look at that as our starting point. This is an at least, and I would expect that if we get overwhelmed with proposals as the portal opens, and staff thinks we need to do something different to take care of it, they'd come back to us. But I want, I do want to get this moving.
Perfect. Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and if that's a motion, I'll say, or a secondary motion or support your request.
So I'll make that, both of those pieces that we strive to go 10 days on the turnaround and that at least 25% of the funding on this goes for youth defined up to 24 years old. And with, with staff coming back if they see a challenge with that along the lines that Mr. Garrett put together.
So Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, of course.
So Jay, I'm okay with your proposal, but if there, if there are non enough applications from youth, we shouldn't be constrained and sit on money, obviously. I think you'd agree with me.
Absolutely.
You know, if, if it works, it works. If it doesn't, open it up.
Okay, that's fine.
The timeframe is absolutely right. It's critical, and thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, I'm fine. If we don't have enough good quality proposals in the youth, then it can certainly flip over, and we'll leave that to the discretion of the staff.
Great. I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, as we focus on workforce, this is more of a general comment as the staff work on this and bring back. I just want to make sure that we focus on those areas of opportunity and challenge in the community. Particularly, I've seen some pretty compelling housing workforce projects be proposed and be sent along to staff. I know that there are a variety of other creative economy type careers that will be about worker retraining, people who've been displaced due to COVID-19. And so I just wanted to make that comment that since this was on consent, you know, and there are going to be more opportunities for us to feed into it, but I do agree with my colleagues on the relative focus on young people, but also I wanted to make that comment about worker retraining.
Okay, very good. We've got a motion and a second then. Is there public testimony on item four, Madam Clerk?
There is not on the consent calendar.
Okay, very good. Let's call the roll then on item four, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Very good. That passes unanimously. Let's move to the last item on the consent calendar, and that is item 10. Councilman Chenier?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. This is very quick. We want to make one change in this. It's based on a discussion with both council members and staff as well as Caltrans on section five around the Navigation Center. Want to replace the current section with the following. And Mindy, you can get this from Jerry in the Attorney's Office. Authorizing the city manager or the city manager's designee to execute the construction contract with GNG Builders, Inc., subject to obtaining all appropriate approvals from the California Department of Transportation. This basically recognizes that we're still in discussions with the department. The department is still in discussions with the with the federal government, but we want to be ready to move as quickly as possible once all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. So that's what that does. So I, and I would move, move the item with that change.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Carr. There's no public testimony on this. We need to move forward with this project. This is a compelling project. Councilmember Chenier has worked very, very hard with this community. And we are navigating our way through the obstacles, but we are committed to doing this. It is vital. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes, and that is the consent calendar. Let's go to our two public hearings here versus public hearing 19 on the ministerial approval of infill housing. Who is presenting on this?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm Ryan Dodge, Associate Planner in the Long Range Planning Team at the Community Development Department. The city's housing need is great. In fact, the city needs to build 5,700 housing units per year to keep up with the demand. Last year, we built 3,100 units. Council directed staff to initiate programs and enact process changes to get more housing built. Staff is working on over 50 potential housing streamlining actions. Tonight, we are excited to bring forward to your consideration the next streamlining strategy, the ministerial approval of infill housing. This program is essentially a detailed pass fail checklist for multi-unit infill housing projects that are compliant with all objective land use zoning and design standards. Ministerial projects are not subject to California Environmental Quality Act review or public hearings. This tool would streamline housing production by greatly increasing planning approval predictability and significantly reduce housing development risk. This program sends a signal to the region and the state that the city is a pro-housing community, and we're ready to build more infill housing. In fact, the city's proposed program has received the support of the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Please note that the Office of the City Clerk has informed staff that the recommendation inadvertently mentions resolutions while it should have stated only one resolution. Therefore, we have revised the recommendation, which I am required to read into the record. The revised recommendation is as follows. Conduct a public hearing, and upon conclusion, adopt one, a resolution determining the project is a subsequent project within the scope of the master EIR for the 2035 general plan, and that the project will not result in any new significant environmental effects not previously examined in the master EIR, and no new mitigation measures or alternatives are required per Public Resources Code 21157.1 and Secret of Bad Lines 15177, and adopting the citywide infill housing design standards that will apply to housing development projects, and two, an ordinance emitting section 17.600.100 and 17.808160 of, and adding chapter 17.862, the Sacramento City Code related to ministerial approval of infill housing. That concludes my presentation. Matt Hurdle, the Acting Long Range Planning Manager, and I are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. I know we've got four callers. Why don't we take the public testimony, and then I will turn it over to the council members for questions and comments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the city council.
Hi, this is James Corliss from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, and we are here tonight in very strong support of this proposal. Two years ago, Secard released the Housing Policy Toolkit, which provides a menu of policy options, best practices for addressing constraints to new housing at the local level. And I just want to say the city's proposal for the ministerial approvals implements one of the key recommendations in that housing policy toolkit. It's critical that we ensure all new housing development review processes are not holding back from building housing. We know we need these neighborhoods, high opportunity neighborhoods, and to hold us back from fair housing and to meet our climate change goals. If the city passes this measure, it sends a message to the state that our region is here to do its part, and the city of Sacramento to do its part in addressing the housing crisis, which also helps our regional Green Means Go initiative. Again, we're very, very strongly in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ansel Lundberg. I live in East Sacramento in District Three, and I'm a co-chair of House Sacramento. We are the local YIMBY organization, yes, in my backyard. We represent renters, climate advocates, and everyone in Sacramento who wants to see more homes in our community in order to make Sacramento more welcoming to everyone. I'm calling in support of this item for staff's proposal for ministerial approval of infill housing. Staff did an excellent job of presenting the item, but I have a couple things to add. So we've worked with staff as they develop this item. We were excited to see it as one of the items on the menu of options that were blessed by the council last year for increasing housing production. The ministerial process would make it easier to build much-needed homes in Sacramento, both affordable and market rate, by avoiding costly, time-consuming holdups that can spell the end for new housing in our community. I just want to say, you know, wealthy and wider neighborhoods, not unlike the one that I am a renter in in East Sacramento, have often weaponized the existing discretionary process to say no to more affordable housing types in their neighborhoods, such as four flexes and small apartments. We actually know of a recent small apartment complex in Curtis Park that was downsized by the developer to avoid public hearings. So this ministerial approval would avoid losses of new homes like these that could be for new neighbors in our community. Finally, I just want to say everyone deserves to live in any of Sacramento's amazing neighborhoods that they may choose, and this process would bring the city closer to that equitable future. Again, please say yes to more homes, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Mayor Steinberg, city council members, and city manager, my name is Erica Bjork, and I join you today on behalf of the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce to share our support for item 19, the ministerial approval of infill housing. We appreciate and applaud the city and staff's efforts to identify this as a priority towards streamlining the development process and for including the community and our builders in its review. More than ever, our builders and developers need predictability for housing projects, of which this updated ordinance will strongly support without any compromise to the environment, city design standards, or the neighborhoods in which housing is built. In fact, what is presented before you today aligns with both state recommendations and local initiatives, including Green Means Go. At a time in which construction and development financing are more challenging than ever, most recently with reports from the Federal Reserve on the tightening of lending standards on construction and development loans due to the impacts of COVID-19, we need to provide whatever tools we can to streamline the process and thus create timeline predictability that is crucial to both builders and those that finance these projects. By providing more efficiency and predictability in the development process, we'll be able to increase our housing supply, which in return creates more affordability to renters and owners. On May 28, 2019, the city council directed staff to create actual next steps and a menu of streamlining options tied to housing, of which ministerial approval reflect housing as a key element. The recommendations and language as before you today will help support a cross-section of builders and projects. Vital resources about people and place that we need now more than ever, to not only increase our housing units, but also continue to provide safe, consistent, and skilled jobs for our workforce. We know that housing supply and home assistance are integrally linked. We also live in a time in which our homes now serve as classrooms, offices, and a place of safety, usually with multiple generations under one roof. There is more urgency than ever for us to build housing and grow the jobs tied to these projects. We need to keep this economic engine humming so our city and region recovers quicker and finally meet the housing goals we have been striving towards for far too long. We urge you to move forward on this key next step and pass staff recommendations as presented. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello. I'm calling regarding the action item of the approval of infill housing. I'm a local resident and property owner near Dale Pass Boulevard in District Two. So I have a statement, and then I'll follow up with just two questions for council members not living in District Two. So if one looks around and sees the infill housing already existing here, they can be summed up to be places of very little maintenance standards. There's low code enforcement, they're high in crime. There's drug selling, there's violence, and basically general disturbances that make it hard to live peacefully. They're places where I would not want my 14-year-old niece who visits me to walk down the street unattended during the day, let alone at night where it's downright scary. I mean, low-income residents and people at risk of homelessness, they do need shelter like anyone else, but there's a concentration of these particular types of infill housing that already exist in District Two, and they're breeding grounds for marginalization of these people. They're already vulnerable, and there's no upward mobility. There's no socialization with neighbors of diverse economic levels, occupations, or careers. Instead, the places are cesspools of concentrated poverty. There's lowered expectations, crime addiction, and generally, people just don't take pride in where they live. And that's what these infill housings that you're proposing, what they generate. So here's a rhetorical question I have, is would you want these kind of housing projects to be built next to your home? Like where you live? The answer obviously is no. Those who oppose infill housing, you know, live in the communities to keep away some of the problems that are created that exists in District Two. So I do have a question for council members not living in District Two. Like honestly, I want to know. Do the concerned residents of District Two have the same rights to peaceful and economically vibrant and safe communities like where you live?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Okay, and if so, how does concentrating low-income housing in District Two create that equitable aim? This question for you council members.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Giovanna Givara. I'm a resident in D4, and my comments are super brief. I just want to say I'm really excited that this has come up to the council, and I am calling to wholeheartedly support this. As everyone knows, housing shortages are particularly stressful for low-income people who find a high-density community to be more affordable. We should be building infill anywhere we can as fast as possible. As one of the previous callers representing Business Interests said when they called in earlier, you know, pushing this forward will facilitate construction and allow for businesses to know what their operations are moving forward. We should continue to support any policies that build more housing, infill housing, and of course, always continue to work towards rezoning different parts of the city so infill can be used in infill developments can be placed in different parts of the city, also addressing the most recent caller's concerns about distributing them in areas where they're surrounded people with different economic levels. Thank you for your time. Once again, I'm calling to support this.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John Vinyoki, and I live in Midtown. I am a recent transplant to Sacramento. My wife grew up here, and I'm a big, big fan of the city. Falling in love with her in 2006. I also fell in love with Sacramento, growing up in Santa Barbara, growing up a Laker fan and leaving all that behind to move to your great city. Very honored to be talking to you today about a topic that's very near and dear to my heart about infill housing. And I'm calling in support of the proposal for ministerial approval for housing that is before you today. As somebody who lived in San Francisco for 10 years, starting in 2009 up until last year in 2019 when we left, I saw firsthand kind of the damage that's done by artificial limitations on the supply of housing with a lot of normal, middle-class, and lower-income folks being pushed out of the city. And I'd hate to see that happen in Sacramento. Anything that we can do to make housing easier and more affordable and more accessible to younger people, to people of lower-income classes, should absolutely be aggressively pursued, and streamlining the zoning process, streamlining the planning process, streamlining the building process. Anything that we can do would make a dramatic impact. It's a thousand, you know, small things, but I think one of the biggest small things is absolutely making the planning process easier. I do want to commend the city of Sacramento for being the best, I think, in the state at making housing housing process and building process easier. I speak that from, you know, experience through building our own house in Sacramento and doing some small multifamily developments in Midtown in infill neighborhoods. And I just want to say a strong supporter of what you guys are doing here, your track record so far. I still think there's lots of room for improvement, and this is one great example of how we can make housing process easier, cheaper to build, and if we can make housing easier and cheaper to build, we can make it more affordable, because ultimately, the more supply.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, thank you. And hopefully you guys can pass this measure and make housing easier. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, this is Nancy Kitz. I'm calling again about something that I really shouldn't be calling you about repeatedly. But the fact of the matter is that Mr. Warren, Councilman Warren, has conflict of interest regarding any development decisions made in the city, obviously in District Two, but also in the city. This proposal seeks to make amendments to the Planning Department's review of infill housing. Actually, I am neutral on this bill. I am calling, however, to say that Mr. Warren has a conflict of interest, and it's amazing to me that the council does not have some protocol with regard to this when these items come up. For example, the Planning Department asks every member when an item come up, what comes up, if they have to recuse themselves on anything. I'm wondering if you folks are actually getting your ethics training. The one thing I am happy about, Mr. Mayor, is that you do want to bolster and put some teeth into the Ethics Commission, which, as you know, I have been strongly in favor of from the first meetings you had when you came to office in 2017. We need a strong Ethics Commission. And we also need the city attorney to step up and, and keep everyone aware of their duties and their fiduciary responsibilities and their ethical requirements when it comes to voting on issues when they have a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kitz. Madam City?
Madam City Attorney, I know that this is an ordinance, if you will, a broad application here. Is there any conflict of interest that we need to be concerned about here?
No, Mayor and Council. This is just a citywide ordinance.
Citywide ordinance, okay. Thank you very much. Let's hear from members of the city council. I have a number of members that are up in the queue here. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to start by thanking all our city staff and the multiple stakeholders that it's taken to get to this point here to do this ministerial approval of infill housing. And part of why, one of the reasons we're at this point is even though there is the SB 35 option to use an expedited process to try to get more housing development, it's only been used recently by two applications in the entire city. And so I think the important thing about here is we're providing options. I'm going to go ahead and move the staff report and staff recommendation with direction that it return back in one year. And the reason I want to make sure that this comes back in a year is a couple of things. One, right now, the staff is engaged in the stakeholder process for our 2021 requirement for housing allocation. And I think it's important for us to review the effectiveness and the usage of this tool in that point. Second, there is concern that I did receive from the affordable housing developers who are building a lot of the extremely low-income housing about the competitiveness between for-profit housing and affordable housing profit. And if this would actually create a disadvantage to some of those affordable housing developers who are looking to build in various areas of places like Stockton Boulevard because of the benefit that this minister approval process will hold. The last thing that I want to bring up is mixed-income housing and how we can achieve that. And in speaking with some of the development community who builds affordable housing, it's been a challenge to actually build mixed-income housing communities. And what we heard from the callers before, I think it's important that if we're going to actually have a city that's inclusive, a city that doesn't have communities of haves and haves-nots, is that we start looking at making sure that our policies have that lens of creating mixed-income communities, where you can start, even from the building standpoint, we have that in mind. And I think there is still a lot of question of whether this approval process can answer some of those. There's no question, we need it, we need to move forward. And so that's why I'm glad to move this forward with the direction to come back with some of those processes part of our housing report to the city council for 2021.
And Councilmember Gera, did you open and close the public hearing?
And I'll move to open and close the public hearing and move the item and request that the staff return back within a year on this process.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Geta. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to clarify. Councilmember Gera, you're asking for a report back on how often this process is used in 12 months and other information about housing production in the city?
That is correct. And if there are any kind of unintended consequences we see because of it, that's all. And I think that's a report back. If we need to make changes, the council has the ability to make changes at that point. But I think it's important for us to receive that information back within a year.
So I'll second the motion. I have a different perspective than my colleague on some of the ideas behind this. But I do think that what we want to see is how we can reduce the cost of housing, provide more predictability, and meet our climate goals, transportation goals, and other infill goals. We've had a lot of conversations here at the council about empty lots and the impact of empty lots on our neighborhoods. We've had a lot of conversations about how hard it is to get projects built because you end up with one neighbor who might not like it and sues because of that. And so what's before us today is another step in an arc of reforming our planning and development code that started in 2012 and maybe even before that. And actually emanated, Councilmember Gera, out of a project in my neighborhood, the La Valentina project at the Alquai Flats light rail stop. And the developer of that project encountered so much resistance, so many different approval processes, special permits, other things, that it led the city to, on that transit-oriented development site that was a brownfield, et cetera, to revamp our entire planning and development code. We've seen other affordable housing projects really tripped up by some of these processes. And even although I disagree with the caller that this is something aimed at affordable housing, this should make affordable housing projects much simpler, much simpler to get approved, especially because a lot of people fear them without cause. But it also will help a lot of small projects that otherwise may have thin margins, need help to get built. And it's not lost on me that this COVID crisis economically has changed the financing structure for many of these projects. And the more we can reduce the cost to build them, the more likely it is that they can be offered at lower rents. And that in turn means that they can be built. And so I really am grateful to the staff and I'm grateful for all of the people who weighed in on this. There is still a lot more work to be done on housing, not only in our community, but across the state of California. And I guess the cautionary tale is I hear a lot of our new units are being filled by people coming from the Bay Area, which continues to exacerbate our own housing shortage. So I hope that as the Bay Area fixes its problems, hopefully fixes its problems, that we continue to provide as much housing as possible for our own residents. And this is another tool in our toolbox to encourage that. So I'm pleased to support it. I think it's a great step forward, and I'm glad that we're able to do it today.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanson. Council Vice Mayor Harris, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. So I agree with the comments that Councilmember Hanson made, that this is not necessarily about affordable housing, although it can have a positive effect on the ability to build some affordable units, which we need in a very dire way. The problem in Sacramento is that our market is, our housing market is completely out of balance. And we do have a lot of outside pressures, most notably from the Bay Area. A lot of people have come up here and flipped houses, raised rents. But then we also have a population migration. And we have people now who telecommute to the Bay Area but live in a cheaper area in Sacramento. It's really put us under a fair amount of stress. But it was really the Great Recession that caused us to basically curtail all building for a few years. And we got so far behind in our housing stock that the competition to either buy or rent has become, you know, as Steve said, very much exacerbated by these pressures from the Bay Area. This is, as he said, a tool, a way to move forward. I can tell you, as a builder, it's very hard to get anything out of the ground, pretty much anywhere, but certainly in Sacramento. And I want to laud Ryan Dodge and the rest of the team for moving this forward. It has come to Lawn-Ledge Committee a couple of times. It's bounced back and forth between Lawn-Ledge and the Planning Design Commission. It's been thoroughly discussed, it's been combed over. I think it's a really good piece of work. You know, honestly, if we're ever going to reach our climate goals, we have to get more housing in the city. We have to get a little denser, and we have to get people using public transit. This is a step in that direction, and I'm highly supportive. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ryan, there's one item I'm concerned about in this process. On the checklist that developers will have to use to get the ministerial approval, there's an item still there that says at the council members' discretion, they have one community meeting to explain to the community what the project is all about.
Oh yes, Councilmember Carr. That was part of the ad hoc ordinance, the streamlining planning process that was approved in May, I believe, of this year. It did change our code, so that would apply to this process as well.
Okay, thank you. So I will happily support the motion, and I look forward to the report coming back in one year.
Very good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to also thank staff and my colleagues for being leaders on this very important issue. I think, I mean, it's well documented. I've been a longtime advocate of smart growth development, which infill development is smart growth. It doesn't stretch infrastructure, reduces the carbon footprint. And it also, which hasn't been mentioned, it provides increased funding for parks, schools, and things that are in short supply, particularly during markets like this. So again, I want to thank staff and those that worked on it from the council. I think it's another area in which we're leading in this region and potentially in the state. And it's something that I think others will be adopting. Also should be noted that Sacramento's market, and we talked about the influx of people coming from the Bay Area and other places, it's a targeted market because you do have real estate that can be developed, infill real estate. So we're going to continue to see, particularly during the scare of COVID-19, we're going to continue seeing people moving to places like Sacramento where they can have a house on their own lot. And we're going to start seeing a little bit of softening, I think, in these real urban cores, ultra-high-density projects because of, you know, the imprint that this pandemic is going to leave on a lot of people's minds. And so I think this will help with that. I think we're going to see a lot of our urban underutilized and vacant parcels develop. And it's going to help Sacramento recover. It's going to be one of the tools that help us generate the revenues needed for the rest of the city function. So thank you to staff. Thank you to the council colleagues that led this effort. And I'm a strong advocate of it as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Warren. I just want to say that, first of all, Mr. Dodge and all the planning staff and to the members, the Lawn-Ledge members, and everyone who's worked on this, this is a big deal. It's one of those maybe underrated things that doesn't get, won't get a lot of attention. But this is the city leading not only on housing policy, but this is another signal to our business community that we want to remove all of the unnecessary impediments to creating more economic activity, especially housing. And I'll say personally that it's been 12 years now since Governor Schwarzenegger signed SB 375, which was my statewide bill, two years of negotiated agreement with all of the stakeholders to promote infill housing development. And at the very beginning, one of the issues we knew would be an impediment to successful implementation would be whether or not we could provide some meaningful regulatory relief to allow housing developers to be able to build faster because time is money. And so this is really an important step to provide ministerial approval for hundreds of units of housing at a time that meet our climate change goals. I just want to say this is a really happy moment, happy day. And congratulations to all who've worked on it. Let's call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
A resounding yes.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Again, thank you very, very much. Let's now move on to item 20, which is the easement issue on Mack Road.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor, Madam City Clerk, and members of the city council. My name is Jair Bautista with the Engineering Services Division in the Department of Public Works. Before you this afternoon is an item with staff recommending adopting a resolution to vacate an easement for public utilities within the lot at 5701 Mack Road. The vacation request of this 15-foot easement is being made to facilitate construction of warehouse buildings for mini-storage and auto-storage facilities. All conditions that were placed on this amendment and resolution have already been met, and staff can proceed to record this resolution with the county if the city council chooses to approve this request. Public Works staff, along with other utility agencies, support this vacation request. And furthermore, this project is consistent with the Sacramento 2035 general plan and in compliance with the California Streets and Highways Code. That concludes this proposal, and staff will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Councilmember Carr, I know, has a comment. Is there public testimony, Madam Clerk, on this item?
There are no callers on this item.
Okay, then Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a self-storage facility on about 10 acres near the intersection of Mack Road and Center Parkway. It has been vacant ever since I have been in Sacramento, and it has been a eyesore. Homeless camps have been set up there. We've had a terrible time keeping the weeds abated on that site. The developer came to us a couple of years ago. We've gone over this project several times, had several community meetings. The community is in favor of the project. They're going to implement architectural designs to provide artwork on the outside of the project. So with that, I'll just open and close the public hearing and move that the item be passed, be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Without any public testimony or further comment, please call the roll on the item.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby? Yes. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. That passes nine to nothing. Thank you very much, everybody. Let us now move to the discussion item for the evening. And that is item 21 and the proposed charter change. I am listed as the presenter here tonight appropriately. And I would like to take a few minutes, I think it'd be 15 minutes or so, to go through this. Then I think we want to hear from the members of the public. And then we will open it up for council discussion. This is not an action item tonight. This is a workshop, if you will, to be able to discuss and potentially move forward for action next Tuesday. I want to begin by thanking all of my city council colleagues for this opportunity to discuss this very important item to the city manager, to the entire city team. I want to thank Matt Ruyak specifically for his incredible skill and work in helping with the legal side of a complex set of issues. He really went above and beyond. And I want to thank the large community coalition that presented this first last Thursday and for working and partnering with me and my team and my staff, who are in the room here with me, for getting us to this place. And so if you give me just a few minutes, I would like to talk about the what, the why, and the how. We are living through historic days in our country and in our community. People are rightfully demanding that we pay attention like never before, that we address issues of systemic inequity, that we address the lack of genuine opportunity for too many people and too many of our neighborhoods. The people of Sacramento, and it's not just those who are taking to the streets, are asking, is my city doing all it can to improve the lives of all our people and all of our neighborhoods, but especially people whose zip codes too often dictate their life choices and their life chances? I know that this discussion involves fears and concerns about the concentration of power. I will address that argument substantively. But I want to say first how I view all of this discussion tonight and over the next week and beyond personally. Next year, I will start my 25th year of elected public service to the people of Sacramento. My career will be fulfilled whether we change the charter or not. None of this, frankly, is personal to me. I just want to do what is best for our city. And so to all my colleagues and the people of Sacramento, I know that you will do what you think is right and what you think is best for all of our city. There are many questions, but for me, one question that overrides all. Does the current structure of city government give our city the best opportunity to deliver on the change that people are rightfully demanding for people and for our neighborhoods? And of course, one reason why this discussion is always so challenging is separating the people who hold the positions in the moment. And after all, we hold these positions, whatever they are, only for a temporary period of time. But the challenge is separating the people who hold our positions in the moment from the structure itself. I know I will not be mayor forever. That thrills many, and it may worry some others. And let's be clear, this is an era of city government where the mayor and the city manager not only get along, but are friends and collaborative partners. It isn't always so, and it hasn't always been that way. And as we critique various ways to operate city government, I think we need to acknowledge that. But for anyone who wonders whether this discussion is in any way personal about any of the existing leadership in the city, I want to make it very clear that neither I nor the city could ask for a better public servant and manager than Howard, Howard Chan. I would work with Howard, and I know it's true of every one of you. I would work with Howard every day of the week and under any structure. He will be a leader in this city. But this should not be about any individuals. It should be about what structure best serves the people, not just today, but over the long term. And I want to explain what has motivated me, my own evolution, and why I think the timing of this proposal is not, in fact, rushed, but instead responds to this unique moment. The idea of changing the city charter has never been a passion plate for me. I did not run on this. Yes, I've thought about it. We've tested it a couple of times. That's all been well-known. But it has not been the thing that has driven me. It is only really in these past weeks and months, since COVID and George Floyd, that the truth has crystallized, at least for me, as the mayor of this city. It was the principal protests at and near my home multiple times. It has been the intense criticism, which I take very seriously. It has been my own self-reflection about how I need to elevate my own leadership. It has been the fact that most people think that the mayor is in charge and can make the needed changes. More accountability in the end may only make my job and the job of any future mayor harder. But it is worth it if it leads to better results. I do not believe the current system that we have is broken. I just think it can be much sharper, timely, and effective. The charter amendment before you is called the Mayoral Accountability and Community Equity Act for a good reason. The mayor of this city is not the only one accountable, but is most accountable to the people for police reform, for fulfilling promises, for investing in our neighborhoods, for actually funding housing and shelter for people who are homeless. My colleagues on the City Council are great public servants, and the city team are great partners and public servants. But nothing moves very fast, and accountability is diffuse at best. The mayor, in my view, has few tools to meet the demands of the people for greater and faster progress. The mayor does not propose the budget. The city manager proposes the budget and then must parse and mediate between nine members, including the citywide elected mayor. The 2019 Measure U budget debate is the most prominent example. So is the endless challenge of making the homeless problem better, from citing to speed to funding. I believe that we can do better, and there are many more examples. Anyone who runs for mayor or any elected office should never complain about being held accountable, and I do not. But where accountability is not paired with the tools to actually deliver, the community has the right to be frustrated. I hear the argument that we should take our time. These aren't new issues, by the way. They have been debated in this community for a decade or so. But I do know this: Communities left behind do not believe that responsive change and accountability can wait. I would not support a concentration of power or an imbalance of authority in our city government. And so rather than go back and forth with the slogans pro and con, here is the actual proposal for consideration and your suggestions, both the public and my colleagues. First of all, we would take the work of Councilmember Ashby and others in the community around ethics reform, and we would put the Ethics Commission and the Sunsign Ordinance in the charter, and we would staff it, which means we would make a permanent commitment and a more sustained commitment to the issues of ethics and sunshine. We would take the recommendation of the Measure U Commission that has worked very, very hard and has certainly found its strong voice to require participatory budgeting in our city in a real way and leave it up to the City Council, together with the community, to define its parameters. The issues of race, ethnicity, and gender are paramount in our society now. We cannot miss this moment. And so the charter amendment, and I want to thank Councilmember Geta for being so insistent on racial and ethnic equity especially, and Councilmember Ashby again for your championing gender equity, and Councilmember Carr as well, who I know has led on these issues. We would require that every major decision we make as a city, both from a budget and an ordinance standpoint, would have to analyze the impact on people of color, on women, and on any other population that has often, too often, been disadvantaged. If it's important enough for us to require an environmental analysis for every major project we build, it sure is important enough for us to ask whether any given budget decision or any major decision we make as a city affects the people who we are sworn to serve. The charter amendment would include what I call the Measure You Promise. We've got a $500 million-plus city budget, and a lot more than that if you go beyond the general fund. And this is important to me, as you know. But I also think it's important to the community because I made a promise to the community in 2018. And frankly, I don't feel quite as good about asking for more change without having fought to ensure that an earlier set of commitments that I made to the community would be upheld and would be included. So $40 million for inclusive economic development and youth. And for the council, again, to be able to help define and decide that, but to make a sustained commitment to public safety first, always comes first, always should come first. But to make sure that we also define as our core responsibilities investing in our neighborhoods and investing in our economic future. The charter amendment also includes a requirement that we analyze the impact on small business for everything that we do, a major decision we make as a city. I want to especially thank, I want to especially thank Councilmembers Hanson and Vice Mayor Harris for always making sure that we hear the voice of small business and everyone else. And on the $40 million promise, let me call out especially Councilmembers Warren and Councilmembers Jennings, Councilmember Chenier, again, Councilmember Geta, but everybody for really insisting that we pay attention to those core responsibilities as well. And then we get to at least one core of the question, and that is the restructuring. And I know that it is impossible to get away from the term "strong mayor", but I actually think that it is a misnomer. Because when you really break this down, not only is this proposal not a concentration, and certainly not an over-concentration of power in the mayor, it actually strengthens the City Council in a number of ways, and I'd like to review that. First of all, the City Council would elect its own president and vice president. They would add, of course, a ninth City Council district after the 2022 census and redistricting. But more than that, the City Council would have plenary authority over a number of important subject matters where the mayor would no longer be involved. Remember, the mayor has a vote, one of nine votes now. But in the following areas, the mayor would no longer have any power or responsibility, and the City Council would have it all. And here are the categories. Number one, the council would have plenary authority over any land use decision that did not involve a change in an ordinance, of which many or most land use decisions do not involve a change in ordinances. That would be the City Council. Secondly, the City Council would have plenary authority over anything relating to the work of the Housing Authority. Third, the City Council would have the right to put any charter amendment, absent the mayor, onto any future ballot, including modifying what we are discussing, modifying or eliminating what it is we are discussing here tonight. The City Council, of course, would have the plenary authority to pass the budget. The mayor could not spend a dime, except maybe what is currently within the city manager's authority. I suppose that would have to be worked out through resolution. But essentially, the mayor would not be able to spend a dime, consistent with his or her priorities, unless the City Council passed a budget that dictated and directed the spending priorities. The City Council, of course, would have the ability to override any disapproval that the mayor made of the city budget and/or an ordinance. I will put that disapproval in context for a moment to make the case that this is anything but a over-concentration of power with one elected official, the mayor of the city of Sacramento. Essentially, for any council vote that does not end up 5-4, the City Council would have the automatic ability, if they chose, to override a budget veto, a line-item veto, or an ordinance veto. Now, the council might choose to, the council might choose not to. But it's only when the vote is 5-4 that the council would arguably then not have the ability to be able to override if it chose to. The mayor would have some important additional tools, but they would be checked. The mayor would hire the city manager, Howard Chan, subject to the confirmation of the City Council. Yes, the mayor would have the unilateral authority to fire, if you will, the city manager. The manager would report to the mayor. However, the manager would continue to have exclusive authority to hire and fire any department heads and run the city operations. If a mayor, for example, any mayor, acted arbitrarily to want to fire a city manager to put his or her own favorite in there, the City Council, of course, could check that by refusing by majority vote to confirm the mayor's choice. As I said earlier, the veto power is important, but it is limited and checked. The ninth City Council member, in my view, increases community participation and potentially increases even more the diversity of our City Council. I want to conclude with this, and then I want to open it up to public testimony and the input of the community and my colleagues. Some have suggested that the equity and participatory budget reforms be separated from the structural changes. My answer is that the pieces go together. Policy change without the structural change is incomplete. An elected chief executive who frames the agenda and has the ability to follow through on the agenda, not alone, but with the City Council and the community, has a better chance, in my view, of delivering consistent results for the people who are rightfully demanding more progress. For my friends and detractors who do not agree with this proposal, I only ask that your opinion includes consideration of the question that I raised earlier. Does the council-manager form of government bring you the accountability and pace of progress that you expect for your city? And so today, in this workshop, I would value your input, your suggestions, and your advice so that we can come back next Tuesday with an even better measure. Thank you very much for the few minutes of time so that I could lay all of that out. Madam Clerk, how many people do we have in the queue to testify?
I have 25 callers in the queue.
Okay. Do any of the members object to taking the public testimony first here? All right, then let's go ahead and let's hear from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, Paul, District 4. Mayor Kevin Johnson, I'm sorry, Steinberg. It was the repetition of the "strong mayor" once again that confused me. It seems the public needs to reiterate every few years to a new mayor that we don't want "strong mayor", or to see if you're able to manipulate the wording in such a way that you will confuse people into giving it to you. My bet is you're going to go for the latter, this time by including non-binding equity language to make sure people feel you're doing the right thing. Kind of like Measure U. You can just pull it out from under us again. We want a representative body that is responsive to our concerns and not one person who holds most of the reins of power. We want, well, A, we don't want "strong mayor", period. But B, at the very least, we want the equity issues split off from the "strong mayor" portion. If people want "strong mayor", you should be able to get it passed without an assist from equity issues that many communities desperately want. equity issues that many communities desperately want. We've heard your platitudes. We've seen your fecklessness in the face of police union money and the fear of not backing, quote, "law and order." And we've seen a Democratic council headed by a Democratic mayor do the bidding of those that would harm disadvantaged communities. We've seen you performatively claim to care about these communities and then do nothing of substance to help them. And no less than five, and no, less than $5 million for community investment when it was supposed to be north of $40 million isn't impressive. Governments' budgets being cut everywhere while police continue to see raises isn't impressive. It shows you're bought and paid for. You're a Democrat in name only because we know we can't count on you, and we can't count on the council to do what Democrats in the communities they represent want. The last thing we want to do is narrow the focus of police union dollars to one point of contact for corruption, your bot. Hand-wave all you want, but we see that you lack any principles when it comes to helping disadvantaged communities, aside from getting more of our tax dollars to pay off your donors. We've seen your judgment, spending $25 million to bring the army into our communities well after any rioting or significant damage to property was occurring. You waste money on your poor judgment. Why on earth would we want to give you more power? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name's Richard Ramirez, and I live in District One. And I oppose the change to the Sacramento City Charter. Six years ago, neighborhoods in the city of Sacramento faced a power grab by then-mayor Kevin Johnson under the guise that he alone could make Sacramento a world-class city if only the city charter could be changed. Johnson argued that he was stifled by the need to seek consensus and did not have the time for deliberations to enact his will upon the city. He wanted to be an executive mayor, commonly mislabeled "strong mayor." Fortunately, that measure driven by personality was defeated. Regrettably, history appears to be repeating itself. All mayors have the potential to be strong mayors through persuasion, intellect, and the ability to build contemptus. The argument that the checks and balances in the charter must diminish is like Al Capone saying, "You can get much further with a kind word and a gun than with just a kind word alone." As reported in the B, all the suggested changes in the proposed charter amendment, except the creation of the executive mayor, can be considered and adopted by the city council now. Do not open the door for future abuse of power by creating an executive mayor. If the city council wants to again place this divisive matter on the ballot, assure the people that it is driven by prudent public policy, not personality. For example, make the executive mayor term for two years, not four, so that we are able to push out an abuser of power sooner than later. Make the executive mayor effective November 2022 instead of immediately and only following the election of a new executive mayor. A person must run for the new position and cannot merely assume the position. The proposed amendment should prohibit any current member of this mayor and city council from running for the new executive mayor position until 2024. Adding these provisions will assure our neighborhoods that the proposed charter-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Adding these provisions will assure our neighborhoods that the proposed charter amendment is driven by sound public policy and not a thirsty personality.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. This is Glenda Marsh, and I am on the Leadership Committee of the Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition, as well as a co-founder of Sacramento Metro Advocates for Rail and Transit. And the reason I became a transit advocate is to promote equitable access to affordable and safe transportation, which is crucial to women and families. And I personally have long wanted to live in a city that spreads the wealth, promotes all aspects of community safety and security, so that no one I know ever has to live in fear for any reason or be deprived of the ability to provide for their households or deprived of financial and health security and to old age. This is one of the things that I'm most concerned about in this city. I appreciate the council has seen the wisdom of investing city funding for free transit for high schools, for students, two years in a row now. And this is an example of what I believe the council can do and must do more of on its own for the good of the city and its residents. This is the kind of power and vision I would like to see more of here, and I don't believe that we need to change the city's structure at this point in order to achieve these kinds of equity investments at this moment. I think the city council can act on those very well. There certainly is clear support from the community to do those types of actions. These kinds of solutions for equity can't wait until after the November election, but we can debate and consider city governance structure at a later date, and that can wait. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. This is Nolise Edwards. I'm chair of the Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition, and I am a constituent of District Three. On behalf of our coalition, I wanted to express our opposition to the proposed charter change. I listened intently and have had, you know, discussions with you, Mr. Mayor, who we respect wholeheartedly. But I think as I continue to listen, I will just indicate one thing. We did submit a letter that outlines in depth what our concerns are. But as you talked about the proposed changes and the need to do it now and the issue of equity and community funding, that's where I want to say we have a huge concern about because the funding for equity and social justice services that are important and vital to the community, they can be done now. They can be done under the current system. They can be done under the current infrastructure. They do not need to be tied to a change that's going to have fundamental, have a fundamental impact on the, on the infrastructure of city government. And so we strongly feel that these proposals shouldn't be separate. If these issues are that important to the council, which we know they are, then separate them out and address them as, as you should, especially during this time. I would hate to see these proposals linked in, you know, with this proposed change, and then that change goes down, and then we lose an opportunity to fund the vital programs and services that the community needs. And so we sincerely ask that you do not rush this proposal, that you need to have community input, the community needs to be involved, they need to be debated. I know you have some-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, thank you. We just think that the proposals should be unbundled, and if they're that important, then separate them out and address the equity pieces by themselves through the current structure. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Wendy White. I'm a homeowner in District Four, a business leader, and a founder of the Sacramento Women Advancement, Women and Girls Advancement Coalition. My focus tonight is on the rushed timeline and the process for this proposal. It would have far-reaching fundamental changes to the distribution of power and accountability of the mayor, city council, and city manager. It warrants full public debate, both in the development of any proposal, which did not happen, and in the review and the discussion, which is not possible in the midst of a global pandemic. Sacramento citizens are overwhelmed, who are trying to stay safe from COVID-19, address childcare needs, homeschooling, how to make the rent or our health payments. This untrusting of time is the worst time to ask citizens to get engaged and educated and vote on a permanent change to our charter. Our politically active community is already volunteering and is described as the election of our lifeline. This effort that's proposed tonight attracts time and money from the critical presidential base and even our two city council races that are before us on November 3rd. Tonight's single city council meeting for discussion of public input is not enough. And if this council should vote on putting places on the ballot on August 4th, it will give 62 days before the ballots are out on October 5th. Let me say that again, 62 days from vote to put it on the ballot to actual vote by the public. That's not adequate time for the public to fully review, absorb, and dialogue on proposals that would bring such fundamental, structural, and political change to Sacramento. Without a full public reading and understanding of the substantial impact on our diverse community, it's a disservice to the community to rush forward and place this act on the November ballot. I urge you to please-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. Please pause, step back, and after November 3rd, do this right with public engagement and the development of proposal and time for public education prior to voting. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
My name is Brian Powers, and I live in District Seven. This proposal is a very bad idea, just six years after it was rejected by the voters. It centralizes all power in the hands of the mayor and takes power away from the council and thus the city's voting citizens. Bringing it up again, especially in such a hurried way, and it is hurried, demonstrates disregard for the will of the voters. The alleged findings in the proposal and the mayor's comments tonight about the need for this are not supported by any facts or evidence. The claim that the proposed changes will create more accountability and transparency is wrong. It will do the opposite. By placing all power in the mayor's office, there will be less accountability and transparency. The mayor has been quoted saying that he needs a way to do faster action. No, as citizens, we need a mayor and council that act more cautiously and deliberately. There are no facts or evidence to support the argument the mayor has made that the proposed strong mayor government would have made any difference in the city's response to the COVID pandemic. This argument is the equivalent of a scare tactic. There is no justification to give the mayor absolute authority to appoint and remove the city manager, to veto the entire city council-proposed budget or any line item, subject only to a supermajority override, or to veto any and all ordinances passed by the city council with only a very few limited exceptions. This is not a strong mayor proposal. The mayor's correct. It is a misnomer. It is a give-all-power-to-the-mayor proposal that will reduce the city council to spectators and work to the advantage only of those friends of a mayor seeking budget money for their personal programs and causes. Also, to dedicate $40 million a year from the budget to a specific category is not fiscally responsible. To require evaluation of the impact of budget actions and ordinances on promoting equity and helping small businesses does nothing but add unnecessary layers of bureaucracy and cost to the city government, and there is no support for the proposition that these-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Or cannot be accomplished. I urge all council members to vote against this proposal. It is a very bad idea for the city of Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Kitty Bolte. I'm a resident of District Five, and I think that the strong mayor proposal, as it's currently structured, is terrible and a cheap political trick. Sacramento citizens have rejected strong mayor three times already. It's an appalling waste of taxpayer dollars to force us to discuss this again, particularly when you're also wasting taxpayer dollars suppressing actual ballot initiatives like the real rent control initiative. It's an even worse political trick to try and tie strong mayor into these other genuinely progressive reforms and so force voters to make a fastian bargain between accepting strong mayor and the things that we actually want, or being able to vote on them separately. They're really only tangentially related. It's insane to consider them as one issue. You should separate them, and really, you should quit wasting our time with strong mayor. The city council has heard hours and hours of public testimony, many times only to vote against the interests of their own constituents. There's no reason that we should give you more power, particularly Daryl Steinberg. The idea that you need additional power is crazy. You all vote in lockstep and everything already. It's not like the city council is holding you back, quit lying and quit wasting our taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Robert Copeland. I live in District Four. I think the strong mayor proposal is a bunch of BS. In the future, you may get a good city council but a rotten mayor who will veto anything, everything. I want the city council realize that. One, any mayor should not have veto power over anything. I think that's given too much power to the mayor. Two, he can separate the goodies from the strong mayor. And the last bit, we are discussing the wrong ballot measure. We should be, the city council should be going for the real rent control and not this strong mayor proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, this is Courtney Copeland. I am a lifelong Sacramentoan, and I currently live in Alcoy Flat in District Four. In contrast to some of the previous callers, I'm actually willing to entertain the strong mayor proposal, but I would like to be given the opportunity to do so separately from the equity issues. So I would appreciate seeing these two items on the ballot separately. The equity issues, I think, are very important. I would like to see the proposed changes, such as analyzing effects on gender and race and small business in any proposals. So I'd love, you know, that's probably going to get my support right away. The strong mayor proposal, you know, I'm willing to entertain it. I've lived in a few cities in my life, but I think tying it to these highly popular equity issues is kind of a nasty political trick. And I don't think you should underestimate Sacramento citizens. I think we're willing and able to look at how structure and policy interact and entertain them separately. That is all.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, Mayor Steinberg and city council. I am just appalled today, and before I even get into this act, I want to address Ashi. You had a week off, and you're still not paying attention. And then Steinberg, you mentioned George Floyd's name in the process of justifying your corrupt act. Please, Steinberg, don't ever in your life again use the name of a black man who was murdered by police to build a story for your crap policies. And now to the item, the most insulting item you could possibly push now. Why wouldn't we pass this when we've rejected it before? Why would we pass an act that gives a mayor the power to control the budget when his budget is already racist, when he's repeatedly shown he's not receptive to the needs and voices of the people of Sacramento? You all have the audacity. The audacity, the audacity to decide this act by combining it with the Community Equity Act. The Mayor Accountability Act and the Community Equity Act are two fundamentally completely different items. Separate the two proposals so that the people of Sacramento can oppose a strong mayor once again and support the Community Equity Act. Mayor, you want to talk about improve the lives of people in Sacramento? Defund SACPD and invest in your community. Mayor, you want to talk about what to do, what you want to do that is best for Sacramento? Defund SACPD and invest in our community. Mayor, you want to hold yourself accountable? Defund SACPD and invest in our community. Separate the items and defund SACPD. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. This is Mike Barnbaum. I live in District Two and work in District Six. I wanted to speak to you here on item 21. From conversations I've had with both neighbors and coworkers, there seems to be a lot of fear that they're telling me about absolute power if this was to go through. And I would hope, after I've spent a lot of time during the pandemic memorizing something, and I'll get to that in a minute, that this would still be something that would have openness, transparency, and accountability to constituents and to each council member, colleague, and the mayor. And I would hope that when December 15th comes around and we think about when we say something, that we are true to accountability, transparency, and that is, if you, if I said, "I, Sacramento City Council Member-Elect, do solemnly swear that I will preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I bear true faith and allegiance-" and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that I take this obligation freely without mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and I will well and faithfully execute the duties upon which I am about to enter," that we mean it and we are transparent and open to people when we say that. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is Lynn Williams and I live in District 7, Larry Carr's district. And I would like to just share that, are we live? Am I, hello?
Yes, you are.
Okay. I would like to just share that in this moment, this is an opportunity for this city to show up in a way that is reflective of what equity can look like and be an example throughout the nation. However, the way that things stand now with Steinberg in position, I would not urge any of our city council members to give him any more power than he's already exhibited. And so with that being said, I would just like to urge you all to consider separating the two items because it is not one in which is, that is going to bring equity to the black community. And so when we talk about performative politics, one example is just Steinberg opening his mouth and saying Black Lives Matter and saying the name of George Floyd. Because we know that in years past, that he has challenged every black person that's come into the city council meeting with decorum. And so when we come in to express our legitimate black rage, you shut us down. And so you pick and choose who you want to deal with from the black community, and then you silence the rest of us. And I have a problem with that. And so I would urge all of you to separate this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, everyone. I am disturbed. Mayor Steinberg, you recognize the fact that you won't be mayor forever. Thrills many, and therefore you know that the people of Sacramento, especially those advocating for community and social equity, don't trust you. And we certainly don't trust you now that you're trying to make Mayoral Accountability Act and the Community Equity on the same measure. You say that social change can't happen without structural change, but voters have made it clear multiple times that this is not the structural change that we want. But of course, we want community equity. To have both of these on the same act is just so rude and mean and low. I believe at a previous city council meeting, I heard you recognize that the system is corrupt, and that is very clear today that, yes, you are. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Pat Foncushida, President and CEO of the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce, and I am a resident of District 7. We are in support of the Mayoral Accountability and Community Equity Act, and here are the reasons why. Our support is consistent with our previous support of Measure L placed before voters in 2014. If not now, when? Almost a decade of debate. We believe that governments, like businesses, must take a hard look at their governance to stay in step with the people and what they require. The city of Sacramento has more than a half a million residents today and growing. It needs a system of accountability and governance that reflects our size. In 2002, being mayor was actually a part-time job. The mayor is now a full-time position, and it is the next logical step to enhance the mayor's authority and accountability as the only full-time citywide elected official. When opponents talk about the potential abuse of power, we see full transparency and enhanced accountability. Our citizens look to the mayor to take decisive action and to help push our city forward, especially in times of crisis. Our city currently has nine different leaders, but a system run by a city manager. Opponents argue that the community equity piece should be separated out into two separate ballot initiatives. We believe that the most important aspect of the act is the community equity piece. As President and CEO of a minority chamber, I have been fighting for inclusion and social and economic equity for 22 years. Our chamber was formed to fight for parity for minority small businesses to ensure that we had a seat at the table. By ensuring that the community equity piece is part of this act, we protect that commitment to inclusion-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
By ensuring that the community equity piece is part of this act, we protect that commitment to inclusion, our seat at the table, and our voice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
First off, Mayor Steinberg, don't forget your cameras on. You could at least pretend to be paying attention. You could listen to your constituents for a few minutes. Mayor and council, my name's Eddie Franco, a member of District 4. I'm calling in both opposition to the proposed charter change as written, as well as the concept of quote-unquote "strong mayor" altogether. First, I'm asking that the community equity provisions in this proposition be separated from the mayoral accountability provision, and that these instead be considered as two separate measures. It's frankly unconscionable that the equity reforms being pushed and championed for months by our Black and Brown community leaders are being used as leverage to shove this previously rejected idea down the throat of Sacramento. These two considerations are not germane, and we see through this dirty trick. But I also want to comment more broadly on the concept of strong mayor. This concept's been rejected by the people of Sacramento twice before. You should be ashamed, Mayor, that you are at the last minute pushing this unpopular concept during this time of crisis. Voters are more disenfranchised than ever, and public comment is more stifled than usual. You all know this. I could comment on you specifically, Mayor Steinberg, on your continual failure to keep your promises, on your repeated lies and deceit that you spout to save face, on your record of putting special interests over the people of your cities. But it's not really about you. It's retaining, it's about retaining the power of the people in Sacramento. You saw what happened in the election in my district, District 4. We're fed up, and we're ready for change. I refuse to stand idly by while you all try to weaken our voice and stifle our power, especially when we are on the cusp of change. So to answer your question, Mayor, yes, the current representative system is working fine for us, the people of Sacramento. It's just not working for you.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is Katie Valenzuela, incoming council member for District 4. I hope you all are well. I'm calling unfortunately to oppose the ordinance in front of you, and I could spend my entire two minutes outlining technical critiques, but instead I will refer you to the letter submitted by the advocate for the very communities this ordinance is purported to help, and which I was happy to sign on to. And I will use my time to address something that the mayor said in his overview, that these are not new ideas. Because he's right. Not only are the equity proposals not new, these are ideas that the council can and should act on without the charter revision. Instead, these longstanding community requests have been hastily added to a really poorly-written ballot measure and are being leveraged to obtain a centralization of power that none of us are asking for. In fact, if there's one thing that I heard loud and clear this year, it is the deep frustration that exists in our community, because they want more of a voice, not less. That is what progress would look like. So I hope you'll consider the changes in the letter, and better yet, I hope we'll follow the example of San Jose and pull this back in favor of forming a charter commission. There are real issues that we need to talk about, as you mentioned at the end of your remarks, Mr. Mayor. And I would love to talk about something like, what if we didn't have a citywide mayor? What if we elected a member of the council to be the mayor each year, which many other cities do, and would avoid the misconstruing of accountability on one person because they're elected citywide? That's one proposal of many that we could consider and should consider in an open, transparent, and inclusive process. So please don't put this on the ballot in November. If you do, I hope it will reflect what the letter reflects and that we can really get to work on the issues we need to solve in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Evan. I live in Council District 4. I'm calling tonight to voice my opposition to this item as it is written. This agenda item is an attempt by our mayor to hold hostage the ideas of community equity and engagement, government ethics and accountability, in exchange for this strong mayor system, a system that would strip the public of access to the mayor's office and give one individual more power and trust than he's shown he deserves, in exchange for some lip service to transparency and equity which, as very well analyzed by Council Member-Elect Katie Valenzuela, are shown to have no teeth as written and would do almost nothing to actually hold anyone accountable. Even if these items for equity, engagement, ethics, and accountability were written appropriately, there's literally no reason they should be bundled together and held hostage for a strong mayor system that the voters of Sacramento have voted down multiple times. Mayor Steinberg, you say this isn't personal. If that's true, why are you presenting it right now with only a week for the council's consideration and tying it to watered-down versions of the very same issues you currently seem so intent on ignoring? To the public, this mayor wants you to believe that this would somehow increase the accountability of the office of the mayor. All this will do to his office is increase its power and decrease the public's access to it. This ordinance only requires the mayor to be available to the public twice a year. It makes a mockery of the Brown Act by allowing the mayor to make deals with essentially whomever he pleases with zero public input. This plan as written would be bad for the public, bad for the council itself, and only serves to enrich the mayor. Stop wasting our time, Daryl. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, thank you. I'm Kevin Ferrer, the Executive Director of the Sacramento City Building and Construction Trades Council. We strongly support the Mayoral Accountability and Community Equity Act and believe it comes at the perfect time for our growing city. Our unions provide job opportunities and second chances to many underserved individuals in Sacramento's lower-income neighborhoods. And that is why we proudly support the $40 million annual commitment for inclusive economic development that will ensure our future economic growth will be better connected to our often-left-behind neighborhoods. Additionally, we believe proposed governance changes will make the city more efficient and effective, particularly when it comes to creating jobs and getting people back to work. Our unions proudly stand behind this measure and believe it will strongly benefit our great city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, Richard Wake from City Council, District 5. Yes, Richard Wake from City Council, District 5. This is a bad idea for several reasons. One, we've tried it three times and it hasn't worked. Two, it's a mockery of democracy when 40,000 people signed the rent control initiative and the city council refuses to put this on the ballot. Three, when we're arguing ethics here, as has been argued before, we strengthen ethics. It's extremely unethical for Council Member Rick Jennings to even be voting on this. His wife served on the panel to formulate this proposal. If Council Number Alan Warren had to recuse himself when the issue of the marijuana shops were being debated because he owned property up on, up in Del Paso Boulevard, then Rick Jennings should be totally willing to recuse himself from this vote because of his wife serving on the, on the panel. That's ridiculous. That's highly unethical. Mr. Jennings, you need to recuse yourself from any more discussions on this. Another thing, when you're talking about gender and racial equity, many of you have had three opportunities over the last four city council elections to support candidates of color or minority candidates, most notably in City Council District 5 with Ali Cooper and Tamika LaCluce and Ms. Valenzuela in, in City Council District 4. This is an issue, this is one of the most misogynistic ideas, saying that adding a ninth city council member is going to strengthen the council. This is nothing more than a power grab to minimize the power of two new, of at least one progressive woman, and potentially two with my Van coming on to the city council, to minimize their power on the council because you people politically oppose them and aren't happy that Steve Hansen is getting, got kicked off the council. That's ridiculous. You guys really ought to be ashamed of yourself for that. It's misogynistic and it's also very, very-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, lipstick on a pig is still a pig.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dr. Maya Dash, and I am a resident of District 6 in East Sacramento. And I am strongly opposed to this so-called Mayoral Accountability and Community Equity Act. If there's anything that we can learn from current national news in Portland and elsewhere, it is the extreme danger of a brash centralized executive branch, and particularly one with direct oversight of the police here via the city manager. Furthermore, I think it's abhorrent to tether this executive power grab to a toothless version of racial and economic justice reforms that our community members of color have been tirelessly calling for and which has previously been ignored by this very body. It feels like our Measure U money and other reforms are being held hostage, that the community will be only given the promised economic development money and participatory budgeting if we give in to this power grab, and we will not. But the very minimum, this council must separate the two items and trash from the strong mayor. Naming it the Mayoral Accountability Act does not hide the fact that it makes the mayor less accountable to the community. This change allows the mayor to further hide from the people by not attending city council meetings, but instead have, having only two yearly town hall meetings as a kind of facade while being granted broad veto powers. This is not true accountability. The Sacramentoans have said this before, and we are saying it again, we do not need a strong mayor and particularly using racial and social justice as a thin facade to disguise this. Thank you, council members, for your careful consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. This is Nicholas Heidorn. I'm an Alhambur neighborhood resident and speaking tonight in my personal capacity. I'm in favor of the strong mayor measure. Strong mayor is common among cities of our size and something of a natural evolution. That's because cities of our size deal with large and complex challenges that require vision and voter buy-in to solve. I think it makes sense then, from an efficacy and political accountability standpoint, that the chief executive officer dealing with those issues should be elected too. As someone who also had a role promoting ethics reform in this city several years ago, I also want to commend moving the Ethics Commission in the charter and providing dedicated staff to the Ethics Commission. In the short time that the commission has been active, it has already gone through three and soon to be four staffers in the clerk's office. So I think this element of the amendment adds stability for this important watchdog body. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Mayor, I see surprisingly that you are seeking a charter change advocating for strong mayor. I strongly urge the council to vote against this charter change. There shouldn't be only one person in charge of the budget. To make it sound like the city council has any financial control over their own district is ridiculous. When you, Mayor, are controlling the budget, you're not being truthful. The system we have now works just fine with a city manager in place. You know, frankly, Mayor, I don't trust you with the city's money. You really didn't do well with facilitating the SacCity School District- You really didn't do well with consolidating the track city school district and teacher union. Measure U continues to be fluid, and I don't think the money is intended to be spent in the way it was voted on. And I think your fingerprints on any budget items, frankly, are suspect. I don't think you're being sincere. Council members, if you vote this through, then I strongly urge the public, anybody who's listening, to vote no on the ballot measure in November. Mayor Steinberg, please don't put the city in further financial distress by taking over the budget. We are in the middle of a crisis right now. The budget is already in deficit. And again, I just don't trust you. People that are calling in in favor of you being strong mayor tend to be unions, organizations. It makes me suspect that maybe some deals have been made. And that's just not the way to do business. I think this came up suddenly. I think it was designed to come up suddenly. And I think-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, city council members, please, please vote against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yep. Mayor Steinberg, you know me all too well, and I have made it abundantly clear to you. You of all people should know that actions speak so much louder than your words. So while you have very conveniently laid out here that this, like, and framed this Community Equity, Mayoral Accountability, and Equity Act as a measure of accountability, creating an accountable executive mayor, I'm going to have to call straight up bullshit because at no point in the four years that I have seen you in office have you actually shown that you, like, that you are willing to be held accountable to the community. I have showed up at dozens of city council meetings where you have literally interrupted and violated every rule of, like, every rule of public decorum that you try and claim other people should be following. You have thrown people out for mere, like, for mere audacity of speaking in outrage against city police, against city government, and also this council's very actions. You've thrown people out just for flipping you off, even when they didn't say anything, and you have pettily responded to certain comments, even during their comments, interrupting them in violation of the Ralph Brown Act, just to add in your own little digs. So this idea that this, like, and now here we are, where there is a massive uprising that has continued for more than two months now, and you're, like, actually seeing the community, like, pushed back and having to make some, like, semi-serious changes? Here you are trying to piggyback on to, like, genuine proposals that you say are much needed by the community and try and give yourself an award on top of all of it. Why? Because you are missing your, like, your seat as a speaker of the state legislature? Speaker pro tempore? I don't know.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
You need to, this council needs to vote no against this act and actually propose the Community Equity Act proposals separately from this. They're completely unrelated-
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. Brandon Black, Director of Public Policy for the Sacramento Metro Chamber, calling in to show our support for the Mayoral Accountability and Community Equity Act. Every day, our members, business owners, and leaders are held accountable to their many customers and stakeholders, the results they generate. Their business success depends on how efficiently they allocate their dollars and how effectively they meet their customers' needs. During this time of disruption, we have an opportunity to step into the challenges before us. Every day, our business owners and leaders are responding to this challenge by streamlining operations, adapting to changing environments and consumer behaviors, and critically looking at how best to revamp the old way of doing business and stepping in to the new normal. The time is right for our city government to do the same. We appreciate the mayor's commitment to including both race and gender equity as pivotal lenses in the city's analysis of key policy and budgetary decisions. We also appreciate the inclusion of small business and believe that by analyzing these impacts, we stand on better footing, stabilize, and grow the local economy. We know that our community is feeling wide-ranging impacts due to COVID-19, and we stand to feel these impacts into the future. As we continue our push forward, this lens will be important to creating a vibrant economic future. Again, the chamber is in support of Item 21 and look forward to ushering in the next chapter for Sacramento. Thank you for your time and we wish you well in your deliberation.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, thank you. Hi, my name is Giovanna Givara. And first, I want to remind you that there are 9,418 cases to date of COVID in our county. There are 1,700 in Placer, our neighbor county, 1,300 in Yolo, our other county, and 1,400 in San Joaquin County. I want to remind you that in your city, there are still ongoing protests against police brutality, asking for accountability, and remind you that you've taken no real decisive action towards addressing these concerns. I want to remind you that every meeting should start with these specifics so you can remember what the issues that your constituents are facing really are. You failed to pass any significant housing protections, and so I don't understand why you think that starting a discussion on how to structure City Hall is essential when essential workers are losing their lives, sometimes incomes, due to illness and their families are potentially losing housing. I want to ask how, you know, you were limiting comment regarding police reform last meeting and the meeting before, and today you decided to talk about a strong major. I don't understand why you're trying to force this onto the ballot while you're suppressing initiative from your constituents for rent control. Furthermore, there's no reason that the charter amendment and the community equity should be a single item. They're two separate items. Community equity should be at the top of every agenda on every single item, regardless of the mayor's voting or veto power. I listened to your argument, mayor, which was very weak for why these two items are connected. This is some DC-level politics, where you're trying to tie an action that no one wants as a rider to an action that you know we want. This is not constructive criticism. This is a constituent asking you to focus on multiple crises that are at hand. Focus on working with organizations that know and tell you what your community needs. More money-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
No one in the community is asking for restructuring of the charter. Focus on what's important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. And I have 14 more callers in the queue. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, my name is Lambert, the founder and CEO of To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes that was founded in Del Paso Heights, California. Shout out to Grant High School alumni. I did want to say that, as I listened to this discussion, I have heard no caller mention how much power someone who wasn't even elected, that's the city manager's office, I'm against that power and anyone who's not voted into that power. Our business had tremendous, has had tremendous problems with that department as far as submitting applications. They talk about equity all the time, but it doesn't apply to Del Paso Heights. We're the litmus test. And by the way, I would like to thank Mayor Steinberg for filing a lawsuit against Wells Fargo, who was very hateful and cruel towards black and brown people that were members of that bank, including To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. So I'm all for diminishing the power of the city manager's office. I would also like to announce our cheesecakes went viral last weekend. I look forward to working with anyone with the city council, including the mayor, and I want to find a way to decrease that power. Now, I heard about the Brown Act tonight mentioned. That's, that, there's a culture in the city manager's office that is being protected by the Brown Act that are denying my family from getting access to funding, and I'm pulling for Mayor Steinberg to do the right thing. He seems like he cares about the homeless and the people of color and all of that, but I hope that the city council votes for To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes to get funded. That has nothing to do with ties to the mayor. That has to do with being qualified and submitted a proposal and voted for Measure U twice. I'd have to study this-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Steinberg, for that lawsuit against Wells Fargo.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the council. My name is Jennifer Hering, and as an 11-year resident of Council District Six, I just want to say I'm not predisposed to oppose the strong mayor form of government, and I'm familiar with the pros and cons of each municipal government type. But I wanted to raise a few specific concerns for your consideration. Given the proposal's call for a ninth council seat, which can't be filled immediately, there would be a non-trivial amount of time where the mayor would possess new powers and the voting thresholds for overriding vetoes would still require six votes. It would be out of eight rather than out of nine votes. I think you should ask the question if some or all of the mayor's new powers should be aligned with the seating of this new council member. Something to consider. Also, raising for the council's close consideration the significant implications of the mayor having not just veto power over council decisions, including a line item veto of the budget, but also a role in improving all council decisions. Sections Nine and Ten's proposed analyses of Social Equity and Small Business are described in terms that I fear lack the identification of any objectives that these analyses would have on the council's decisions to proceed or not proceed with a proposed budget allocation or a, quote, "major" policy decision. As of now, there isn't anything determinative about these analyses, and these provisions are non-binding, informational, and aren't yet connected to any goals or standards. It's also an interesting choice to single out small business for special analysis. Wouldn't the city also be interested in analyzing the impact of the budget on, and major policy decisions on big employers, on arts, tourism, and the entertainment industries, on nonprofits and community-based organizations? I think they might. You might. Significant changes to the city's charter would really be well-served with more community input, preferably through the work of a charter review commission that's comprised of a diverse array of Sacramentoans and not during a pandemic when civic engagement is more challenging and when our attention is contending with the coronavirus crisis. Indeed, at this time in our history where the public seems so much more-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you, I will. Thank you. It feels critical that the concerns of marginalized voices be centered so that the changes Sacramento makes are best able to serve the needs of vulnerable Sacramentoans and their neighborhood. We need unity during this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Andrew Jones. I'm calling from District Two, and the decision as to whether or not Sacramento becomes a strong mayor city should be on a separate ballot. These equity issues should not be tied to the strong mayor proposal. Mr. Mayor, please stop using time and resources to procure more power and authority. Instead, please listen to your constituents. We want more money for educational, human, and social services by diverting money from the police. We do not want more executive power for you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, and good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Cassandra Jennings, President and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Urban League. I have joined a coalition of community organizations in support of the Mayoral Accountability and Community Equity Act. I'm honored to have served the city as an Assistant City Manager and have seen firsthand how difficult it can be to be nimble and respond to major issues facing the city. In fact, I think that the city has grown up now and become even more complex. And as we grow, so must we look at all the aspects of the system and how it can be improved. This act would institute lasting reforms designed to promote racial and gender equity. It'll bring government actually closer to the people and increase accountability down near the City Hall and for the city of Sacramento. And many of the issues, such as participatory budgeting and the racial and gender equity lens, are direct results of other organizations and leaders' research and demand for more accountability. And the permanency of the Ethics Committee and the requirement for the $40 million for the inclusive economic development just ensures us that, and it sort of locks us in, those commitments, and so we won't be having the same conversation we've been having around Measure U. But we cannot make these policy changes without addressing the very structure that's going to be responsible to carry out those changes. The change to the executive mayor form of government is not a new discussion. It has been researched, studied, and restudied, not only by the city but by other organizations in great detail. The timing is also in alignment right now with the 2020 census and the redistricting that follows. My hope is that over this next week that the city, that the city council will take into consideration the comments received in writing and at this meeting, put your best foot forward-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Okay, and let's take it to the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. This is Dan Maruiz. I'm a resident in Sacramento. I wanted to remind the council, the last time this was voted on, there were sweeteners just like this one put in on the ballot, and it was defeated 70% to 30%. Okay, that's number one. Number two, Ann Rudin, I think some of you folks may know who she is. Ann Rudin, a former Sacramento mayor, was interviewed back then, and she said the idea of the strong mayor system has come up several times and was always turned down. She didn't feel additional power was needed. I never felt constrained working closely with the city manager to influence policy. She had the same position you did, Mr. Steinberg. And guess who was in favor of that strong mayor proposal that KJ put out? It was Mr. Steinberg who had a different theory at the time. Some of the exact same words that were being presented tonight were used as arguments for a measure that's defeated by 70%. I did a straw poll on Nextdoor five days ago just to see how many supporters would occur and how many wouldn't. There were over 80 people that replied, not one supported this measure. So I think the council needs to wake up here, see what's going on, and get this not on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Brian Chove, a resident in Land Park in District Four. I sincerely appreciate the mayor's and council's recognition of the need to build trust, accountability, and equity in our local governance. However, I do not believe the proposed act, which combines two uniquely and structurally different proposals, upholds those principles. Instead, the council may demonstrate its sincere commitment to building trust with voters and accountability to equity advocates in our community by adopting four recommendations included in a letter sent to you earlier. Those recommendations are to, one, separate the proposed act into two charter amendments and let voters evaluate each on its own merits; two, strengthen the provisions in a separate Community Equity and Ethical Governance Act; three, to remove the proposed mayoral veto power and retain the mayor as a member of the council in the separate Mayoral Accountability Act; and fourth, and finally, to add a third charter amendment proposal to remove the requirement for binding arbitration for sworn police and fire personnel. The mayor mentioned that our community is righteously calling for change, accountability, and responsiveness, but we are again calling for that change, accountability, and responsiveness tonight. We're asking that you honor that now, in this moment, and over the next week, to honor the equity advocates and requests we are making to separate and improve these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the Sacramento City Council, and in particular, Councilmember Jennings. My name is Nancy Jong, and I am a resident in Sacramento and homeowner living in the Greenshaw and Pocahontas area. I am calling in to urge the council to not rush the city altering decision as time and our priority as a city must be laser-focused on helping communities and families who are being most impacted by COVID-19. Nonetheless, if the mayor and the council are intent on having this debate about the merits of a strong mayor system in the middle of a global pandemic, it does not need to look any further than the neighboring cities to see clear examples of the risk of a strong mayor system. In Oakland, despite an overwhelming majority of the council and support several ordinances to hold law enforcement accountable and to protect renters, the mayor has uterolaterally and deliberately chosen to slow block implementation of these ordinances, effectively overruling the supermajority of the elected city council. I'm also concerned that this strong mayor initiative and the establishment of veto powers would further dilute the voices of historically distant franchise communities, particularly those in South Sacramento and those who do not have the resources or outside political influence. The issue is compounded by adding an additional at-large council seat which would dilute the representative power and voices of communities of color. This is particularly evident in Los Angeles where the voices of communities of color are diluted by the influence of police unions and developers who simply have to target the mayor and ignore large portions of this city. Finally, as a Southeast Asian American resident in Sacramento, I find that equity goals articulated in this proposal to be slightly disingenuous. There is nothing preventing the current mayor and current council from fully executing these common sense provisions right here, right now, holding these important reform processes in exchange for overarching veto powers and noncompliance of the Brown Act versus silences communities of color. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jim Gonzalez. I'm the Chair of the Latino Economic Council. The Latino community in Sacramento has felt very much the brunt of the COVID epidemic and also the lack of equity in many decisions that occur and affect our community. What we ask, and I am proud to be part of the coalition advancing the Mayoral Accountability and Community Equity Act, is we ask that this be on the ballot. We trust you, our mayor, and we trust our city council. You are good representatives of Sacramento. And we ask that we have this on the ballot where we trust the public. The public needs to be trusted as to whether, after these crises of the pandemic and the systemic racism, we need to be trusted to vote for a better city, a better governed city, a city that has checks and balances, that has transparency, and that has accountability. So regardless of whether you think this is a issue that has come up time and time again, no, the time is now. The times have found us, and we just ask for the opportunity for all the voters of Sacramento to decide on a better city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Evan Minton, a former Sacramento Housing and Human Rights Commissioner. You likely know me as a transgender advocate who has stood up to entities like Dignity Health. I first want to say that I genuinely did not want to be disappointed in you, Mayor, but you make it really hard. Strength, and I thought you also believed this, Mayor, does not come from power at the top. It comes from shared power. It comes from voices and neighborhoods coming together, working for a common good. But I thought about it more, and I realized that maybe we aren't on the same page because you haven't displayed that. Ever since George Floyd died, I watched you, and I hoped for more. Sure, prior to the moment that we're in, you bought our place in Army Tank. Sure, you bought them a drone, but I thought surely you would be there for our impacted communities now. You would listen to them. You would be responsive to them. You would want to work together with them. Instead, you are putting this power grab on the November ballot during a pandemic when people are losing their homes. You do not listen to your boards and commissions. You do not listen to the communities closest to the pain, and you do not take into consideration 99% of the public comment at your own city council meetings. None of your actions are making me think, geez, I'd like to give this man more power and less accessibility. A few key points. One, this proposal means you wouldn't have to show up at most of the city council meetings. Two, you already get all the votes you need. Three, your equity proposals are non-binding. If you are serious about equity, please take that rider out of this proposal and give that a separate vote. If you are serious about meeting this moment, please rethink your actions. They are getting worse, not better. And please, collaborate with those community members who are closest to the pain. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. This is Zoe Kipping. I'm a renter in Midtown in District Four. Shout out to our clerks who've done a great job of transitioning this time. You guys have really gotten the hang of this. I really appreciate you. On the matter of strong mayor, I find this to be a strong armed strong mayor. Putting this measure out with such a limited duration of days ahead of us to Election Day suppresses your opposition. It's undemocratic, and it's undeniable, and it's in undemocratic nature. We cannot go door to door. We cannot host phone banks and labor halls. We cannot have kitchen table house parties. We're focusing on surviving a pandemic and limiting our exposure. I read an article today about a Democratic turnout group where they are having field directors quit because they're sending people out to knock on doors, and voters are telling them, oh, hey, by the way, I have COVID, after they've had an interaction. So that's what we're up against, but there will be people who go and take that risk in order to, in order to hold on to the power that we have as a city, as voters. We would be selling ourselves for pennies. We would be foreclosing upon our true power. Equity and participation in budgeting is being ransomed, and it's not right. It's not right. Removing the mayor from the dais is something that I might support because I'm finding more and more the position to be outdated and not relevant. The leadership that we see that is lacking is not due to the structure. I think more and more we understand that the mayor sees this as a stepping stone to other offices that he truly desires. And if that is the case, please, please retire early.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I stand with the 240 other signatories of this community letter who are opposed to this, and I also stand with the 60,000 people who signed the real rent control measures. That should be the matter that's going on their ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sonia Lewis, and I am in District Seven. While it is very necessary to address the major urgency of this pandemic of racism as well as the pandemic of COVID, I hope that we don't rush to putting on the ballot something that is very performative by Steinberg. And I want to echo what I continue to hear here and other callers in saying that this is a power grab. I think that we as a, should be addressing the structure and power of our city manager position because there's too much power there, but I am not willing as a constituent of this city to give Steinberg any more power. This is not the equity that those who are closest to the pain of poverty, the pain of oppression seek when it comes to equity. It does not collectively advance, center, or lift the Black community. This is absolutely a bait-and-switch trickery of Steinberg, and it's adding fines. This is particularly, you don't deserve this power, period. You have proven time and time again to continue to divide the Black community by picking and choosing who in the Black community you will even listen to. And I want to make reference to the history of performative politics that goes back to very strongly in the Democratic Party because Abraham Lincoln signing the Emancipation Proclamation and not intending for all slaves to be free is very much performative, just like Steinberg saying Black Lives Matter to him. So when we are talking about this strong mayor initiative, I really and truly want us to separate, one, not even think about it while Steinberg is in office, but, two, separate these two items because they are very much, need to be addressed separately, and the constituents of this city can make that decision. I also want to reference.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Okay, thank you. I want to make reference to a letter that is gaining traction and has nearly 300 signatures. It's different when a chamber or an organization or even a business person calls in that has ties to the city, but when a person who doesn't have ties to the city does not get heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much. Hello, Mayor Steinberg and Councilmembers. This is Heather Fargo, your former mayor, and I did send a letter earlier today with my comments, but I felt compelled to call tonight as well, and of course, I'll be short because they only get two minutes. First of all, I support most of the community equity issues that you have identified in the act and would really urge you to put those into an agenda item sooner rather than later. Most of them can be approved by five votes of the city council, so it'd be great to have those discussed in detail and progress made on them. And then, second of all, not surprisingly, I do oppose this measure of a strong mayor for Sacramento. I do think the process is too rushed. I think it's inappropriate, or maybe not inappropriate, I just don't think it's right to move the mayor from the council meetings. I think it's important for the mayor to hear the public and for the public to hear the mayor, especially if that mayor has veto power over decisions made after public testimony and council discussion. I think it weakens the council and thereby weakens our neighborhoods. I don't think it fits Sacramento because we are a city of residents who want to be engaged in their government and like representative government. I think the timing is wrong. I don't think it's necessary. And if the community really wants accountability from the city manager and police chief, the charter change that probably should be discussed is whether or not to remove binding arbitration from the charter and whether or not to reduce the votes needed for city council members to remove the city manager from six votes, six votes to five, so, which would make it, you know, just a simple majority. Not that I recommend you remove Howard Chan because I do think he's doing a good job. So I would urge you not to put this on the ballot in November. I would urge you to follow the lead of San Jose, which just yesterday decided not to put a similar measure on the ballot. They do have the same form of government that we have, a council manager form of government.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, maybe after the 2020 census, when we hear about that from 2022, might be a more appropriate time to have this discussion. I think there are more important issues for you all to be working on now. Thank you very much for the time, and good luck.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Ibrahim, and I am calling to strongly, strongly suggest that you vote against item 21. The community has spoken, and I want to make it known that the community sees you. I want to highlight that this body is a body of contradictions in the sense that you would tell us that the reason you don't want to put the rent control initiative on the ballot is because it would create a radically, a radical change in terms of city government when the strong mayor initiative would do that very same thing. I want to say that the community sees you, and we are tired of co-opting. Co-opting as it's described, I'll give you two definitions. One, to adopt an ideal or policy for one's own use. Two, to divert to or use in a role different from the usual or original one. You are doing both those things when you try to tie these equity measures to the strong mayor campaign when there's absolutely no need to do so. And I want to say that you're drastically underestimating your constituents when you continue to so blatantly disregard and disrespect our intelligence and sell our intelligence by assuming that we cannot see what is being done every time that you take the language, you co-opt the messages, you co-opt the policy, you even have the nerve to co-opt the suffering and the lives that are lost due to systemic racism and then not, not make any systemic efforts at challenging the racism that exists within our, within these power structures that all of you reside in. And so I just want to be very, very, very clear that we see you, and again, you are drastically underestimating this moment if you think that the community is going to stand silent as you continuously co-opt the things that we are requesting, that we are demanding that you implement. I, I recommend that you vote against, against strong mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
If you want to make, put it on, make sure that you separate it and listen to the community and the letter and the People Budget Sacramento, make sure that you actually defund the police and the sheriff.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Eric Vaughn. I am a resident of District Four. I strongly oppose the strong mayor initiative. How will Mayor Steinberg respond when federal agents show up in Sacramento except to continue to endanger the citizens and protesters of Sacramento? How will Mayor Steinberg show up when citizens are in danger except to side with the police department? Again, the police department does not need more money. We just have to believe that the city, that Mayor Steinberg is talking, are talking to people that strongly oppose, defund the police when the majority of public comment has been saying to defund the police. So I do not support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Dominic, and I'm a resident of District Three and a fourth-generation Sacramentoan. As a person of color, I'm completely offended that you would hold equity initiatives hostage by pairing them with this bullshit strong mayor initiative. Sacramento was opposed to strong mayor when the rapist Kevin Johnson proposed it, and Sacramento is opposed now. It's completely unethical for the mayor to try to avoid the provisions of the Brown Act. I urge the council to separate the Mayoral Accountability and Community Equity Act into two separate acts so Sacramentoans can show their support for equity and their disdain for power grabs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Flojan Kofar, and I am the Chair of the Measure U Community Advisory Committee and also the Senior Director of Policy for Public Health Advocates. I'm calling in tonight to be able to uplift a community letter that has been shared with everyone on the council, including the mayor, and it is signed currently by over 240 of our community members. And in that letter, we detail that we are really glad that the city is trying to take some action on some of the community proposals that have come up. The challenge, however, is that we don't like the idea that this is tied in with the same conversation about the mayoral accountability. And so we made a few recommendations for changes, the first being to split up the Mayoral Accountability and the Community Equity Act into two charter amendments so that people are able to consider them on their own merits without having to consider them together. We don't like the idea of this being a zero-sum game. In addition, we're also incredibly concerned about the fact that the community equity initiatives don't actually have any teeth, and so therefore, we really want to make sure that what we're going to do on behalf of our communities actually make sure that those things take place and that we're not just studying, but the saying, you know, when we're doing this work is plan, do, study, act. And so we spend a lot of time doing the planning and studying, but not a lot of time doing the doing and acting. And so we are asking to be able to make sure that there are assurances that the acting and the doing happen. But the third thing I want to bring up is something that four council members have expressed some support for in the Sacramento Bee, and that is the. some support for in the Sacramento Bee, and that is the binding arbitration. And so all we need on this is a fifth vote, and I'd love to find one of you on the council to be that fifth vote because in your own efficiency study that you paid $275,000 for, recommendation number 39, the very last one was to evaluate the feasibility of placing a charter amendment on the ballot to remove the requirement for binding arbitration for sworn police and fire personnel. And this was-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Absolutely. This would give the council more, more control over decisions about pay and benefits. And this is something that the community has been asking for, and so I'd love to be, that to be one of the, the measures that you're considering for our November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor Steinberg, I have no more callers.
All right. Thank you very much for everyone who participated in the public comment. Again, there is no vote tonight. I have laid out a proposal. We've heard from at least a number of members of the community, and I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues. And I assume that every member would like to make their comments. I would sure appreciate it because, you know, under the Brown Act, which I do respect, I have deliberately not been able to talk to all of my colleagues about, about the proposal. And so this is the public setting where it's, where it's appropriate to, to have a, have a discussion here. And that's what I hope we can, we can have. We can go, you know, districts one through eight, if, if that's okay. I don't know if Mayor Pro Tem Ashby, if you mind going first as representing District One.
Call eight first sometime.
What's that?
Call eight first sometimes.
That's a motion.
Would you-
Larry did raise his hand first, just seeing.
As a lifelong last name and first name starting with A, I am happy to concede and go towards the end or whenever you would like me to go.
You can go whatever. Councilman Carr, if you would like to go first, you're welcome to.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am looking at your proposal not as if you are the mayor. I agree, this is not a personal decision. This is a decision about how are we going to structure the governance of our city? And we can't think of you as the mayor or Howard Chan as a city manager. We have to think of this, the way I'm thinking of it is that the worst person in the world is the mayor. We have Calicula here or we have somebody who's currently in DC as the mayor. And how does this work with that? First, I think it's important that we review what we have now. And what we have now is a council manager form of government. In the beginning, in 1849, when the city was established, there was only the city council. Nothing else existed. And from there, the whole city structure grew. So the city council had total responsibility and total authority for 100% of what happened. The city council then hired a city manager and they delegated certain authority to the city manager. But the city manager has no responsibility. The responsibility rests with the city council, always has, always will, because the council is the highest you can get in the city and still be a part of the city government. There's no one else to blame. That's why the saying, "The buck stops here" is valid. The buck stops here with the councils. So we hire a city manager and we give that city manager certain authority, which we can give and we can take back as we please. So the notion that the city manager has all of this power is a false notion. It's fake. The council has the authority and it can take everything from the city manager, all authority, all that it wants to take. The way the process was designed to work is that the city council gives the city manager a list of outcomes of what do we want to achieve as a city and what do we want the city to avoid while achieving it? The city manager then takes his staff and they develop a strategic plan. And the strategic plan is their plan to get to the outcomes that we have directed. And then the city manager, once approved by the council, then the city manager comes forward with a budget. And he says, "Here is the budget that I need to accomplish the plan to get to the goals that the council has established." Of course, there's never enough resources, so then our job is to determine which things get done very well, which things don't get done at all, which things we put a lot of emphasis on. So the majority of the council directs the city manager and once, in our case, because we have nine members, when five members devote on the direction to the city council, that's the marching order for the council, for the city manager. If that structure is followed, there can never be a conflict between the mayor, the city manager, and the city council, just like you can't have a conflict with your boss and still be working there. You give clear direction, the city manager delivers clear results. What I see going on, Mr. Mayor, in our city is role clarity. We don't do that. Council members take on operational functions, city manager takes on policy functions, outcomes functions, and the whole thing gets turned around and turned on its head. So with your proposal, I am really in favor of uncoupling the ethics, the measure you, the race, ethnicity, gender from the council, from the Strong Mayor proposal. They are not even closely related. In fact, I can't think of another city that has a dollar amount about anything in a city charter. That is totally bad governance. And we discussed a lot of those when we were looking at dedicating a percentage of our budget to a particular issue. That is, that is a disaster waiting to happen. So the proposal suggests that nine men and women of good conscience cannot be trusted with the responsibilities of governing in the best interest of the people, but one person can. I'm not talking about you, Mr. Mayor, I'm thinking about Calicula. One person can do it, but nine people selected by their representatives can't do it. As has been stated before, this has been before the people many times, the last time in 2014, when 57, 56% of the people rejected it. The proposal, and this is the most troubling part of the whole thing, the proposal would place sole authority to fire the city manager with or without cause, thus making the city manager beholden to the mayor only and not the council as a representative body of the people. This is so dangerous. Why? Because the mayor could use all the levers of the city to reward or punish, fill in the blank, reward or punish council members, reward or punish districts, reward or punish interests. The levers of the city are very powerful, as we have all seen. And because the city manager works with, for us as a council, he cannot play favorites. He cannot say, "I like council member X," or "I like district Y," or "I like issue A." The city manager has to play it straight with all the council members because the city manager works for us and all of us have had projects that the city manager used the levers of government to get a project that was in the interest of your district and the whole city. Projects will come in at $8 million when we've only set aside $7 million, and the city manager will go out and find the money. He will find it from various sources. If you have a mayor who is not holding to all of us on the council, that mayor could use those levers of government to actually punish us as council members, punish our districts, or punish our interests. So that's the most troubling part of this thing, of this proposal. We would have no recourse. There's nothing that we would be able to do until the next election. And as we have seen, a lot of damage can be done to a city, a state, a county, or a nation in four years before the next election comes up. If you have a city manager who's inflicting that type of damage, the council can terminate him right away. But under this proposal, we would not be able to do that. The line item veto could be used the same way, to punish or reward enemies perceived or real. There's been some discussion about the efficiency effectiveness of mayor council versus, mayor council manager versus strong mayor. The most complete study I could find was done by IBM. They issued a report called Smarter, Faster, Cheaper. It was a very comprehensive report that studied the governance in over 100 cities, 13 of them in California. And what they concluded was that city manager council forms of government were at least 10% more efficient than strong mayor forms of government. And why did they say that? What made them say that? What was their conclusion? Why did they think that was so? Because professional management works. If you have a professional running your city, it works. If you have an elected representative running your city, you are much less effective, much less efficient. I think Heather mentioned it, but under the proposal, the mayor would no longer be able, be required to attend council meetings. That further disconnects the mayor from the community, their right and their duty and desire to address their elected officials, especially the mayor. And I think we've all kind of seen this, even when Kevin Johnson was here, when he wasn't sitting at the diocese, people were upset. They wanted to come to talk to Kevin and they want to come to talk to the current mayor and whoever the mayor is, they will want to come to talk to him because he's elected citywide. So currently, we do have checks and balances in place. We can control the city manager. We can tell the city manager what to do. We can enforce our policies to make sure that they are done. If we have a strong mayor form of government, we have no control over the mayor who is directing the city manager. And to the argument that we can always give concurrence on who the new city manager would be if the mayor fires the current city manager, he doesn't have to hire a new city manager. He could just take it over, just like Donald Trump has done. He could just say, "I'm not going to appoint anyone. I'm not sending anybody to Congress for confirmation. I'm going to just keep, I'm going to do it myself." It probably provides a dear, it would probably be impossible to get a veto-proof majority on a council with the influence that the mayor would be able to bring to bear when he can exercise all of the levers of government, when he can say how many people are going to be working in your community center, how many people are going to be, how many days you going to have hotspots in your neighborhoods, things like that. Everybody would want to be currying favor with the mayor. I'm not talking about you, Mayor Steinberg. I'm talking about Calicula here. So we currently do have a lot of transparency. The, we have put into place independent budget analysts, an ethics committee, a public records act, and we have all of our meetings in public. And in theory, we are not colluding with each other outside of the public meeting. I don't see anything in the items that I would ask to be decoupled that we cannot do right now. And I don't think it, the mayor could do it right now with his leadership skills, consensus building, and his best, best practices and the trust from the council. Let's see. There's also a political aspect to this. And they work in a couple of ways. One, the Brown Act, the mayor wouldn't be on the council. So the way I read it, the mayor would be able to contact each council member directly and that would allow him to lobby all of us until he got to five and then make his majority veto-proof. The second political aspect of it, though, is that each of us is elected by district and our districts have different voting patterns. In the district that I represent, if we get 33% of the vote of the district to vote, we, we had a good election. In some districts, you get 60, 70, 80% of the people to vote. And anyone elected citywide would have to pay attention to that, that these, this is where the votes are coming from. They're coming from Esack, they're coming from Greenhaven, they're coming from Pocket, they're coming from North Matomas. So that's where I need to make the levers of government work. If you live in one of those districts or represent one of those districts, that's good for you, but I don't. So that's bad for me. So what could really make this work if we wanted to do it? I don't want to do it. I think it's a bad idea. The only thing that I see could make this work is that if the council had the authority and the ability to terminate the mayor, then we would exercise the same control over the mayor that we have on the, on the city manager. But without that, I don't see how it could work and I don't like it. Thank you, Mayor. Nothing personal. It was not a personal thing.
That, that motion to terminate the mayor, you might be on to something there.
It was about Calicula, Mayor, not you. This was only-
I just gotta-
Calicula.
Just gotta tell you. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings will just go in reverse order.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. One of our callers felt that I should recuse myself because my wife was involved somehow in a panel or something or another. She does a whole lot that I'm not quite certain I know everything that she does, so excuse me for not knowing exactly what she did, but he felt that I should recuse myself. And I have it on, from our legal counsel, that I, my wife can't lose her right to speak because I'm on the council. So I did want that, that person to know, my wife still has her right to speak and I still have the right to be on the council and represent the voice of the people that I represent. So that made me feel better because at least I don't have to recuse myself on this important decision, which I'd like to be very much involved in. I'll be brief because at this point in time, we're not going to vote on this tonight. And what I do want to do is I wanted to make sure that I listened to every speaker who came before us tonight and heard what they had to say. So I've done that and I'll continue to listen for the next seven days as we come back next week to actually vote on it. And I want my, my constituents in District Seven to know that I'll be available by phone, by face, by Zoom, by text message, whatever way they want to communicate, whatever way they feel safe in communicating, to listen to the, the voice of the people. But one thing that I do know, and I just want to thank all those who called in tonight, this is a little different than the way we normally hold a city council meeting. So for someone to call in tonight and be on the phone, I applaud them because that system is definitely probably more difficult than sitting at the podium. So I wanted to thank them and let them know that I did listen to every single comment and I saw my colleagues doing the same thing. But the one thing I do know is that there's not going to be any way that I can listen to everybody in the time that we have in order to be able to vote on this. But the way that I can listen to everybody, if we put this on the ballot, it will ensure that every single voice will be heard. It will ensure that every single voice will be heard. I've heard different numbers as far as how many times Strong Mayor has been on the ballot. And, and I don't know all the history of Sacramento. But in my thirty years of being in Sacramento, I know of only one other time that Strong Mayor was defeated. So Councilmember Carr, you seem to be the historian. If there's more I'd need to know, you can tell me at a later time over lunch. I'll let you buy and I'll listen.
I'll provide you the information.
Okay, I appreciate that. And we got to go all the way back to eighteen forty-nine. Also. Want to make sure that people know, I know, that when, when and if we put this on the ballot, we will ensure that all the voices will be heard and people will vote. And I'm confident that that will be happening. We'll know exactly how they feel about what's in front of them. And I, and I don't really feel like we're rushing, because if I remember correctly. The last time we voted on Strong Mayor was around two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, if my memory serves me correctly. Is that right? I see people nodding their head. And so. What I've looked at is the last two mayors that we've had in, in position. Mayor Kevin Johnson and now Mayor Darryl Steinberg. As this city continues to grow, as it continues to develop, as it continues to be one of the bigger cities in the state of California. The last two mayors have put a strong mayor form of governance. They are now putting that on the ballot in order for it to change. In order to get more accountability, in order to have more responsibility to the people. And to meet the needs of the people as our city continues to grow. And so when I look at the last two mayors having done that. It convinces me, or it makes me believe that this is the kind of governance that they feel will best suit the city. Now I'm going to sit down with both of them and have a more in-depth conversation to understand more detail than we can have tonight. Because I want to make sure I totally understand why they feel this way. I've heard Mayor Steinberg tonight. I thought he was very eloquent, what he had to say. But I want to get into more detail than he was able to give us tonight in a shortened time. So I don't feel like we're rushing because I feel like we've had this conversation now for the last six years. And, and I feel strongly that Sacramento does need to look at a different form of governance. Whether it be this proposal or some other proposal. But we don't need to have the same form of governance that we had a hundred years ago, because the city has changed significantly. So with that said, you know, I'm going to be one that's going to listen. I'm going to hear everything that the people have to say, my colleagues have to say, that I can speak to without violating the Brown Act. And then we'll be able to sit down next week with a more informed conversation about which way I will go.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Well, I'm on now, okay. Uh, thank you. Let's turn it now to Councilmember Geta, District Six.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first, I think, I think it's important that, as mentioned earlier. That we think about this not as, as who's in the current role now and who, even us who are here today. What does it impact us now, but what does it impact for our future representatives? You know, whether, whether it's, it's in five years or twenty years. And the question that I ask myself as part of this proposal, this charter reform. Is, is really how will this affect the day-to-day lives of Sacramento? And how can it, if it is approved, better the lives of our neighbors? I mean, that should be our fundamental point of view. Is this able, is this, does this proposal change the service delivery model for the better? Our city has grown and it's become larger and it's now facing larger city challenges. And, you know, since my time of coming to Sacramento, I've seen those challenges in many ways. But it, even as it's grown, it has still failed to address many of the past inequities and, and challenges that we face today. So I think the conversation tonight again is about posing a question to the voters. And about a change of. To the challenges we face today. I think, I appreciated the history lesson from my, my colleague here. Because if we look back at Hiram Johnson, it created a change over a hundred years ago. And I probably think that our values today probably are different than those over a hundred years ago. And even in the late nineties, when the city changed to a full-time mayor. You know, I would say voters made that change because of the challenges of the time. And also, I, I think because of the great work that Mayor Joe Serna Jr. had done for the community at the time and then passing. While he was serving both as a professor and as a, as a mayor who was only, quote unquote, a part-time mayor and those who would argue that he was a full-time mayor. And so I, I think we, we have to look at, you know, how does this measure reflect? The, the current time that the city is facing. And that I think should be also be paramount to our conversation. And what is paramount are the challenges we're facing right now. We're still in a pandemic. We cannot forget that anything we're doing here, we are facing enormous impacts. And particularly in communities like the Latino community and the Black community who are facing disproportionate effects right now of COVID nineteen. The structural inequities in our city are, are still present and they're harming our communities. We still have a housing crisis and we have a homelessness crisis of a proportionality that we've ever seen. So, you know, I, I, you know, you know, Mr. Mayor, I take you at your word when you say that this proposal is based on how can the city address the challenges that face its current time? And I think, you know, I think we need to look at that and I will, I will be looking at, at that as how is it, again, how is this? Proposal going to change the day-to-day lives of Sacramento and not shuffling around the political power structure? Under the current system, somebody could argue that, well, there are many communities who fared well and others who have not fared as well. And would the status quo change anything? Or I would ask, does it exacerbate the current disparities? I think over the next week, that's the thing that I'm going to really dive into is would a change in the status quo exacerbate the disparities? Because obviously the status quo is still leaving people out. My first priority here, when I looked at this and I, is the concept of including social equity in the charter. Clearly, our lack of looking, looking at racial equity and gender equity has been a disservice to our city. And, and efforts like Proposition Two oh nine has been a disservice to our state to addressing some of those inequities. But I also agree with the callers that some of this we could do now. And I've asked in, you know, over a month ago in the Law and Lit Committee that these kind of things be put on the agenda, let's move forward. And I think whether this is in the reform proposal for November. Or whether it's, you know, and whether it passes or whether it fails. I think there's a duty for us as a city council to begin moving forward on making very, very affirmative changes on addressing the, the current inequities that are in our city. And, and clearly, you know, race has played a big factor in that. The, the language in the proposal, you asked for advice and feedback. I think the, the, the language in the proposal currently is, is passive. It's a, it, and, and it require, and it asks for analysis. And I think that we should probably be more proactive in the language there. So putting a charge on our committee, not just to analyze, but be proactive on proposing initiatives to address the current inequities that, that are facing our city. The other thing that should be included in there, I think, is also a check on the, on the city itself. Both on the council's progress and the executive branch's progress of those. So a role for the city auditor of how to best analyze the progress we've made on social inequities. And as part of the budget process, also having the city auditor participate. So I don't, I, I, I don't know the exact verbiage on what would be in a charter. Because you, you, if it's too vague now, but if it's too prescriptive, I don't think it helps us address what could be the challenges of the future. So I think on that component, I think there's, there's more, more specificity and, and more intentionality that needs to happen about addressing social and racial inequities. The second issue in general that I hope that, that we can answer here is. How do we prioritize constituent services and constituent needs? Many of us ran because we care about our neighborhoods, we care about our community. And the, 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 the issue that, that people face, the day-to-day issues people face, closing alleyways, illegal dumping. The issues of code enforcement, potholes and tree issues. All of those issues that, that affect you when you walk out your door. The issues of local investment, those are, I think, the constituent needs and constituent casework. You know, I think that is the concern that, that, that I, that I have right now. And I'd like to see what is it, how can we create a mechanism? Because right now, a council member can go to the city manager and, who, a council member has a vote on the city manager's hiring and firing and say. Hey, look, I've got a problem, you know, over on Elder Creek and Logan and I need an intersection there because kids have to cross four lanes. And so I think figuring out how, how do we address the issue of ensuring that citizens will feel that they can go to their council member and address the issues. The quote-unquote, cutting the red tape, for example, you know? Because the mayor, you know, will be charged with a bigger responsibility of some very large macro problems. I, I think the mayor should be involved in the day-to-day issues. But, you know, most, most residents know their council member. They run into them in the same supermarket. They run into them in the, at the, at the, at school events. So I think, how can we better do that? Whether it's a function in the council office system itself. Or whether it's in a different part of, of the city bureaucracy. But either way, because right now the three-one-one system, if that was the only constituent services area, I think we'd have some frustration. Other, there've been some cities throughout the country like Wilmington and I think it's the state of Delaware. That has the, this office of constituent services. We've seen other offices of constituent services, but making that a priority. The, the issue on, on youth, and I'll, I'll, I'll just mention it briefly because I'm going to agree with my, my other council colleagues who are going to bring this up about. Making more intentionality in this inclusive economic development component of youth and inclusive economic development, the measure you quote-unquote commitment. I think we need a specific call out on how much and how much focus on youth. I don't want that to be left behind. And I think youth and inclusive economic development go hand in hand. I think there are great ideas of, of youth apprenticeship programs, of working with the building trades, creating STEM programs, working with their universities locally to encourage you to find avenues for success. I think that if you're, if that's going to stay in this proposal, I think we need to have a, a more call out on youth and how it blends into that. And a definition of inclusive economic development. Now, on, on the mayoral structure here. You know, when I read through this, I, I, I had some, some questions because we're building off of the existing charter. Which was designed off of years of, of a city council manager system. So there's still questions of, of, is the mayor still a legislator or is he an executive official of the city? So if you look at Section Forty of the Charter, I think it's probably page twelve of the staff report. You know, the, you know, the, it requests, it allows the mayor in sections four and six, allows the mayor to introduce proposals and resolutions. And while I agree that in a mayor council system, the, 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 the mayor has the biggest responsibility of introducing the most important ordinance, the budget. I think that is a critical one. And I think that, that is one where the mayor has perspective or should have a perspective of the, of the greater city to begin the framework of what is the, the beginning of the, of the, of the budget. But, but in other structures. Should the mayor have the ability to introduce ordinances or resolutions? I feel like that's a duty of the council if we're splitting the responsibility of a legislative body and an executive body. And that, that the mayor should look at, should look for a council member. He can sponsor something, but maybe look for a council to introduce ordinances or resolutions. The other piece, you know, the, we're building off an old charter. The old charter says the mayor's responsibility is to interpret the policy. Well, I think that makes sense in, in an opportunity when the mayor's been part of the deliberative process. Right, the, the mayor is involved in, in, in the committee hearings, involved in, in the, on the, on the diocese during that process. So I think it, it makes sense currently that the mayor interprets the policy. But in, when you've separated out the mayor from the council, I think the responsibility, if we were going to look at that section on Section Forty-two on. It would be the mayor's responsibility to execute the policy of the council. The council's voted on a policy, it's been signed, his job is to execute it. And the interpreter of the policy would either be the council president or the city attorney, who could be the arbiter. In our state system, it's the, it's the courts. Legislative branch executes the policy, I mean, the legislative branch drafts the policy, exec, branch executes the policy and the courts interpret the policy. So I think there's a little more, I won't go into everything in detail. I think there's more combing through in the old charter if you went to this new system about what is relevant and what is not anymore. Such as appointments, I think the council president in the new system might, might fare better in delegating the responsibility of council members and sharing the work that we all have of sitting on various boards and commissions. Not all of us can sit on all of them, so we try to set, you know, separate those boards out. We should ask, is that still the role of the mayor if he's not part of the deliberate, deliberative body? So I, I think that's a question that we should ask. And then on the most important piece, I think what you've identified is something different than, than other, other positions. And that is who hires and fires the city manager, right? And I think in this one, you know, you've decided to say, you know, you're going to hire a professional city manager, you're going to hire somebody who is from, who's a practitioner. So the concern about, are we still going to have a practitioner or someone with experience in management? I think, I think this answers that question there. But it, it does say that if this council can't approve, can't get to a decision on whether to reject or deny that, that the appointment is deemed approved. I, I really think if the council can't get to a, an affirmative decision, that appointment should be deemed denied because you want the council to, to one. Be affirmative on who you choose or who the mayor chooses. And two, also put onus on the council if they're going to reject somebody to do it and state why they are rejecting a particular appointment. Can't let the council get off. The, 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 the last part about the structure on the mayor, I think, is what's the duty of the city manager to the council to help us get the, get the council to get the information you need to actually resolve some of the problems? You know, if, if the, if, if the city manager is told by the mayor to, you know, plead the fifth per se, you know, or to not provide information. And I'm, I'm thinking worst case scenario here. What is the duty of the appointed city manager to the council to help achieve and get discussions? I think that, that also kind of falls in line with a little bit of the constituent services and when we provide direction of how we want to see things or get information back. I'll say the last, the last piece here, I think, is the, I think the, the budget process you decide, put here is, is a, is a bit prescriptive. I would, I think that calling out certain hearings is good, but I think that if the mayor is going to propose the budget and it's, it comes to the council. The council should decide on how they're going to hear the, the budget and what their process is going to be to construct the budget that they will send back to the mayor. Particularly in a case like right now with COVID, where the, the, our schedules are changing because of, of this emergency. We probably don't want to be too prescriptive in the charter. We just passed a motion earlier today of the schedule with the redistricting commission. Because it was prescriptive. So I think, I think we want to be a little more flexible in, in that area. I, I'm going to stop there. I'll just say, I think, I think there's been, you know, I think, you know, there's been a lot of thought in this. There's been a lot of, you know, conversation about it in our own city over years. And I appreciate the fact that you also have looked at a lot of other folks for input. And I'll go back to, you know, again, how will this affect the, the day-to-day life of Sacramento? Because we're living in a really tough time where we need our, our, our city to do its best and we need whoever's in these seats to be doing their best. And will that system of government help effectuate that? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate, I apologize for the lengthiness, but. There's a lot here.
Thank you for your, thank you for your thoughtful comments. Councilmember Chenier.
You're muted, Jay.
Thank you, Larry. I'm going to be pretty brief. Tonight for me was about listening. to folks on the phone. And it's it's unfortunate that we're in COVID and doing it that way and not face to face. It's one thing to get a hundred or two hundred form letters where, you know, folks have signed their name or forgot to sign their name where it says, insert your name here. But, you know, listening to people in the same room is important thing.
Why not?
But Daryl, you're not muted. So a little bit of history for me, I want to, I want to talk about a couple of things. One is, I want to talk about city managers because a lot of folks have come up and said, you're putting all this power in the mayor's office. I've been, as as Angelique has, I've been through a lot of city managers and man city managers who work very, very differently. And so while this wasn't about Daryl for for Larry, this is not about Howard for me. But you have the Howard type of city manager who is incredibly collaborative, wants to work with the mayor, wants to work with the council members with the sole purpose of getting something done. I've also worked with city managers who basically ran the city and were able to play council members off against each other because of their desire to represent their districts. And so I've been with city managers who've had a tremendous amount of power and known city managers before I got there who were in the same boat. So I think that danger is there and in some ways even easier for a city manager because they don't, the city manager rarely has the public coming after them. So that's one thing. I just want to say that there there's a balancing act between that. One of the most frustrating things for me in doing this for almost ten years now, you know, we're we're looking at public safety and we're looking at all their calls for service. Nobody's really looked at all the calls for service that all the city council members get and the expectations that people have of us in our positions. You know, sometimes you feel like, well, let me get the tool belt so I can come out and fix your light because you've demanded that it be fixed tonight. Right? Is that right, Larry? And and that's a hard thing. And I've always felt that, you know, the expectation particularly of the mayor is you can just fix everything, you can do it yourself, when that's not really the case at all. And, you know, our position, the mayor's position, is always trying to work with city staff, which we have great city staff, but they report to somebody else. So that's always been a troubling thing for me. And it's and I think it's made our jobs a lot more difficult because I'm supposed to be responsive to fifty eight thousand people in my district, but I may not be able to get, you know, that illegal dumping fixed this week or next week or whatever. And I have to go through a lot of machinations to get that done at the end of the day. So those those are kind of the pieces on the structure. I supported the last strong mayor effort. Conceptually, I think it's the right thing to do. And I think we've we've grown up as a city from where we are. I think that our last two mayors in very different ways have shown a lot of leadership to try to get things done. Could they have gotten them done quicker, better, cheaper? I think probably with the ability and the tools that that we've talked about tonight. I I think that the other pieces of the puzzle, and I was not, I mean, the mayor talked about the Brown Act, so I was not a part of that. This is as new to me as it is to most people in the public, which is also why I'm going to be more brief tonight than than coming up. I think all those pieces are really important. Absolutely, we could do them without putting them in the charter. But would they be sustainable is the question. Could another council come by and say, you know what? The ethics pieces aren't as important to us. The race and diversity piece and that lens isn't important to us. Doing inclusive economic development is as isn't as important to us. My recommendation is that we do those things in the next five months or so. But if this is going on the ballot, they need to be codified so that they so that we can be assured that they'll continue. In there, I think they're all good pieces. You know, I would say, and Eric brought this up on the inclusive economic development, we really need a very good definition of what it is. And on the forty million, which is a good starting place, to me, I would like to see be very definite about a percentage, like twenty five percent being for youth. We just put the mayor's proposal off for two years. There's a lot of work to be done on that. But we have an opportunity now to show our young people that we really trust them, that we believe in them and that we're going to support them to be successful. We know the needs are great out there. So I would, I would be very much in favor if if this moves forward of of adding to that forty million, that carve out of twenty five percent for for young people and their programs. You know, overall, I think this is a huge pivot for the city. I think that we would be setting a direction and and there's all of the direction, I think, is in the right, pointing in the right way. But we'd be setting a direction on all of these pieces for the next decade at least. And I think that sometimes overlooked is how much we've accomplished in the last ten years. And you can list off the things that we've done, both downtown and the economy in a lot of our neighborhoods, really trying to push those resources to the right places. We can do a lot more. And so my my feeling, and I'm with Rick on this, I want to talk to a lot more people over the course of the week. I want to talk to a lot of the coalition that the mayor put together about why they're they're where they are on it. Because I think there are a lot of community leaders that we trust and respect. And so that'll be my work for for the next week. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shinir. Appreciate it. Councilmember Steve Hansen.
Thanks, Mayor. I really appreciate the opening comments you gave, the public testimony, which we receive via phone, but also a lot of comments we're receiving electronically. And I think this is also the comments of my colleagues. I think this is one of those things that is is just going to be an issue that is going to be debated because the existential nature of city governance is one that in cities like Sacramento, which we are a state capital, but also a city full of policy wonks, advocates, activists, lawyers, lobbyists, et cetera. It's it's about the fundamental structure and obviously this would affect our charter. Mayor, you asked me, knowing that I was the leading opponent of Mezrel to keep an open mind. So I've strived very hard to do that. And, you know, as somebody who cares a lot about the philosophy of government, I I realize that some of the things that we've talked about, and it's been said out more eloquently by other colleagues are, it's very important to people that are chosen for the roles. And sometimes the structure can help great people do great jobs or it can mitigate people who may not be as up to the challenge in doing their work. And I think that's probably true in both of the systems. But I I am on record as being a big fan of Howard Chan. My predecessor, Rob Fong, deemed him the perfect man. And, you know, I think that there are very important merits to professional government. But I want to go back for a second because there's been a lot of things said, some of them, and there's been a little bit of fact checking tonight. But some of them really don't hold up to scrutiny. And then I had some comments on the substance of what you put before us. First, I'm somewhat grateful that we have a compressed time period to talk about this because, well, this particular initiative that you've brought for us forward to us is a newish. The issue is not new. And I've seen articles that say it goes back to maybe even nineteen eighty nine. And I I'm a student of history in many ways. And I know that the progressive era that gave us, you know, many of the reforms, like council manager, form of government, has also brought forward a lot of other things over time, you know, reforms in state policy. And the Brown Act's been talking about been talked about. This council, just since Mezrel failed, implemented a redistricting commission that we put on the ballot, Ethics Commission, which has been talked about tonight. We passed a sunshine ordinance. We continue to ensure that there are proper, there's proper transparency oversight. And and I I think that the debate about the the structure of the city's governance isn't new. I I think the people who are in this particular Zoom and sit at that diocese may have rotated, some of the people on the phone may have rotated. And and honestly, some of the people on the phone benefited from what I would say was Joe Cerna's work to really elevate the city, the governance structure, to help us focus on breaking away, not just being a government town, but seeing our own virtues and merits, creating an employment center beyond just state government workers. And even more so, since the Great Recession, have we had to diversify our city's economy and really think outside of who people thought we were? Because, you know, Sacramento and other parts of the state is used as a pejorative. It's Sacramento did this to us, Sacramento did that to us. When they really mean the state capital, the city of Sacramento isn't making decisions for Southern California or the Bay Area, but we often get derided. And I think when I hear some colleagues talk about how the city's grown up, I I think about it not as sort of a growing up from a years or size perspective, but from a maturation in our identity and being able to hold space for our multiple identities as a city. And and, you know, City of Trees, City of Festivals, Farm for Capital, River City, Gold Rush, all of that, Terminus of the Transcontinental Railroad. But I don't think there's a rush. The idea that this has been voted on and defeated three times is wrong. There's been only one election ever where the public has voted on that, this, and that was in twenty fourteen. Other efforts to put on the ballot were defeated because you can only change the charter in two ways. One, the council can put something on the ballot, which is what we're talking about tonight, or through a charter commission. You can't run an initiative to change the charter. And that's the core of the concerns over comments about the rent control initiative, attempts to change the charter and fundamentally augment the structure of government, but not go through the approved processes. But even there, to this point about decoupling, the city council in good faith passed a measure to provide rent control protections to the public. We have carried out our duties and tried to protect people long before an election. And I think that's this council and this form of government, but just the who we are, trying to serve the best interests of of people. And folks will disagree, but the arc of progress of the city does tie back probably to Joe Cerna in many ways and people like Phil Eisenberg, Anne Rudin, Heather Fargo, Kevin, you. And and I think it's a misnomer to to let some of these attacks, these ad hominem attacks, take us away from the basic philosophical questions. And so I just encourage the public, as you like this or dislike this, help us focus on the substance of the issues. The Brown Act, just to touch on that, well, it only applies to legislative bodies. And if this measure were to go on the ballot and were to pass, the mayor would still be subject to the Brown Act because there's a prohibition in the Brown Act that prohibits serial meetings. So the mayor could not go to Angelique, Jay, Rick, Jeff, Eric, and tell all of them what the others had said and create a de facto consensus on the council as a surrogate. That is against the Brown Act. The mayor is still, just like any other member of the public and the city manager, subject to portions of the Brown Act. But because that position would no longer be on the council and the that the Brown Act applies to legislative bodies, that, I think, is a misunderstanding of how the Brown Act works. I think, too, there's this 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 challenge. Many people say this has been defeated over and over and over and over and over and over again. But their strong admonition to us is to provide a limiting factor, fact function to what the public can vote on. And at the same time, some of those very people want us to let them vote on other things. So I I'm not sure that I even buy that that argument that ultimately, and I think Councilmember Jennings said this, that ultimately, as being enfranchised by the power of the public through the charter and through the elections upon which we were granted our authority as individual council members and mayor, and then that oath, we can only do so much, so much, but it is up to the people of the city of Sacramento to ultimately decide this question. And to the extent to which we put ourselves between this question and the and the public, I I'm not always sure that it's healthy, but certainly it's been done quite often. And in the end, there may be people who don't want us to put on the ballot, but will lead a campaign against this very measure, maybe successful, maybe not. But I think for 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 us to think about whether it will succeed or fail at the ballot box also potentially shirks our responsibility to make sure that the policy put forward is the best policy. So with with that being said, I I think there's there are several things I would like us to consider. Larry Carr touched on the thing that I think is most troubling to me, which is the termination of city manager without cause. I do believe that there needs to be a process for notification or assent of the council in a termination of a city manager without cause. For cause termination, I think, usually implies that there's a violation of law, a significant violation of policy or some other malfeasance or misfeasance. So I'm less concerned about that. But the without cause termination is something I believe we need to to look at. The second piece is, I I think one of the things that would give people more comfort is a reratification. A vote at some point in the future, four, six, ten years. I don't know what the right number is, but probably four or six years so that the public could revisit this question. The unbundling issue, I'll put aside for now because I feel that it's been covered by the public comment quite a lot. But I do believe in the section nine here, the social equity analysis, that we would be better served by recreating a human rights commission and charging them with oversight of some of these policy areas rather than a standing council commission. I also, as the sole LGBT member of the council, believe that it would be helpful for us to be more broadly inclusive in the terminology we use here. As I read this, transgender people may be included, but it is not, it's not explicit. But gay and lesbian people are not necessarily included in how this social equity analysis would be done. And I think that is a problem that I would like to see resolved. I think there are some important changes here that are also good. The ninth council district, I believe, adds to the balance. I think it actually increases representation of neighborhoods because council district size will shrink by that eighth of a of a district. And I think also it provides for, which was a failure in Mezrel, which didn't create another council district, but required a two thirds vote of the council, which in effect, sorry, a six person vote of the council, not a two thirds. It required a seventy five percent vote of the council to override a veto. This is a much fairer approach to the veto override. And I believe it gives more representation into the the community and the neighborhoods. It is very difficult sometimes to span the various needs of districts that may have more enfranchised neighborhoods to less enfranchised neighborhoods. You get complaints from the people who feel entitled, but you don't hear from the people who feel disadvantaged. And I think this could be another path to to changing that. And then I think I think there are probably some other things that people will raise. But overall, I am working to keep an open mind. And I I do value the And I I do value the professional governance that the city manager brings and his team. I don't necessarily see that immediately subsumed into a collegial-like bloodshed that my colleague from District Eight has envisioned. But these are imperfect systems made up of imperfect people. Strong mayor cities or mayor council cities have their own problems, but so do council manager cities where you see officials participate in misconduct as well. So neither is pure, neither is innocent, and neither is perfect. It is up to us to ensure their perfection.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanson. Let me turn it over to Vice Mayor Harris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the hour is getting late. There's been a lot said. I'll try not to reiterate or go over things that a lot of people have brought up already. I would like to say this, however, that I agree with almost everything that Councilmember Carr brought up, except the termination of the mayor, because that sounds so final. So, you know, the mayor also asked me to keep an open mind. And graciously, he brought me into his Brown Act bubble. And we talked about this at the outset of his idea to bring this forward. And I'm appreciative of that. You know, in our first conversation, which was really our most lengthy one, he had not put together the actual ballot or charter change language. And so so a lot of this information was new to me last Thursday. You know, the fact of the matter is, when you look at governance models, council manager or strong mayor, there are five cities in the state of California that use the strong mayor system. Fresno, LA, Oakland, San Diego, San Francisco. When I look at those cities, I do not see any efficiencies or particular amenities that or policies that they have been able to affect that we have not been able to do as nimbly or better in Sacramento with our council manager or former government. In fact, the only thing that any of those cities has over Sacramento is in San Diego and it's their weather. So it has nothing to do with governance. I, you know, the mayor at the outset asked a couple of questions. Which structure best serves the people, which has the best accountability, and which would create the best pace for progress for the city? So I'd like to answer those, but not not really actually till the end. There, first I'd like to talk about timing. So we are in the middle of a pandemic. This is a fundamental change to our charter that would really alter the course of Sacramento. Right now, you know, just the fact that we're doing this meeting on the computer is problematic for me. I know that many of my constituents are facing existential challenges to their businesses, to their home lives, to their financial security. This is problematic for me because with a change this big, I want to go out and have public meetings. I want to have public engagement. I want the people to be able to voice their opinions, not through calling in to a Zoom meeting of the city council. But I want to get out to all my neighborhood associations and talk this over, what the ramifications are for their neighborhoods, what they can expect with a charter change of this magnitude. There are good things in this charter change language, and there are things that I deem to be quite bad and potentially destructive to the city of Sacramento. One of the things, you know, first about accountability and transparency, I have felt ever since I've been elected, I have felt very accountable to my constituents. They have great accessibility to us as council members. In fact, I think Sacramento is known for that, that our city council has more direct contact with our constituents than any other city that I'm aware of. I think this is a good thing, and I think that that is really where the accountability is. Councilmember Carr brought up a very salient point, which is the city manager works for the council currently. If we deemed that he was abusing his power or using it improperly, we have the ability to fire him. It's not easy. It takes six votes. But that's the check and balance that you're looking for in a local government. None of us can get irritated with the manager, and as perfect as Howard Chan is, and he is pretty darn perfect, all of us have been irritated with him at one time or another. Nonetheless, you know, if if he committed any transgressions or any of the managers before him, the city council does have the power to manage that situation and deal with it responsibly. So there are checks and balances, there's accountability. And, you know, frankly, for my money, Sacramento is about the most transparent governmental organization that I've ever seen. All of our information is out for people to scrutinize. And, you know, when you're not in a pandemic, people regularly engage the council and come to city council meetings. I hear this quite often, that is pretty amazing, people feel they have a lot of ability to affect their city government just by participation. And here's an example. Our Police Review Commission, they have affected policy for our SACPD in a very powerful way. You know, they've made a lot of noise and they've stomped their feet and torn their hair. But the fact of the matter is, we have a new foot pursuit policy because of that commission, because of that committee. People can get involved in our city government and make change. I like that. That's what the people want in our city. And I believe that if they're willing to invest the effort because of the accessibility of the council and our structures that are in place already, that people can make very substantial change to our government. So now we get to budgetary stuff. A lot of the reason a person would want strong mayor powers is to have control of the budget. And that's okay if they're a tremendous manager. But I have to say that political skills and managerial skills are quite a different skill set. And I I've never really met anybody personally who excelled at both. I like the fact that we have a city manager who runs the day-to-day operations of the organization and makes, yes, a tremendous number of decisions. But the council has great input into those decisions. And as Councilmember Carr said, if we created a coherent set of policies by which to direct the city manager, you wouldn't have the little power plays that honestly do happen on the council. You know, Larry is a student of policy governance. And he has spent a lot of time and gone a lot of places, a lot of seminars to understand the idea of how policy affects government. And I really appreciate his his effort and expertise. In this, in this charter language, the $40 million carve-out, in my mind, is unprecedented. I've never heard of a carve-out in a charter amendment. And I not only don't support it, I abhor it. I was the lead opposition to Measure Y and to Measure G because ballot box budgeting, as Councilmember Carr said, is just bad governance. Not only that, it is ill-defined. Nobody actually knows what inclusive economic development means at this point. But I can tell you with certainty, as we go into the budget duress caused by this pandemic, if we sequestered $40 million in the charter, something else will falter. We are looking at structural deficit next fiscal year. And this carve-out would heighten that deficit by a wide margin. So this is something I can never accept. And for me, it's it's an absolute hard stop on supporting this this measure. The idea that the mayor could fire the manager at will, with or without cause, is another thing that for me is a hard stop. If this comes back next week with either of those two things in it, then I will be in absolute opposition to moving this forward. That doesn't mean I'm not keeping an open mind, but these these are big, big problems that would create our budget, such stress that I think it could put this organization into a very, very bad position. We have to balance our budget. If you put a big pot of money over here, it takes the money from over there. This charter change will not create new funds or free up funds. It is not going to solve our budget issues. And ballot box budgeting is just a bad way to run a government. As far as veto power, I don't really have a problem with a strong mayor having line item veto of budget issues. It creates, you know, it creates a kind of a dynamic push-pull between the mayor and the council. It's not a bad thing. However, the ability to veto ordinance causes me a little bit of grief. I've been on the Law and Legislation Committee for a while now. And to tell you the truth, crafting good ordinance takes an amazing amount of work. It takes a lot of thought. It takes a lot of staff time. And I really don't think that a mayor who is not part of that process of building ordinance should be able to just say no. And then have the council scramble to try to retrieve that work by overriding a veto. I don't think that that's the best piece of this. In Section 20, under non-interference, it states that no member of the council can interfere with the manager. You know, of, I forget the exact language, but basically it says that the council cannot coerce the manager into doing their bidding. Well, that's great, but it should also mention the mayor. The mayor should not be able to coerce a manager. So that's one small thing that I would like to see changed. Another bit here that this this means that when we do redistricting, we would create a ninth district. That's two years in the future. In the interim, we would have a council with eight members. So there could potentially be several, many tied votes, four-four votes. And in this charter, it says that a tie vote would fail. I don't think that that's good. I think that that would lead to dysfunction in the council. Additionally, you know, getting five votes out of eight is a lot harder than getting five out of nine to move an issue forward. So I have a problem with that, too. I read the IBM report about the efficiencies of different forms of government, and it did clearly state that council manager, council manager forms of government tend to be 10% more efficient. But in full disclosure, that report was commissioned by the International Council of City Managers. So take what you want and leave the rest. But if you read the report, it's pretty exhaustive, and it seems to me to be very well reasoned. I don't think that a strong mayor system is more efficient than council manager system. You know, I'd actually like to, I'll finish up here real quick. The mayor of San Jose, Sam Licardo, wanted to go for strong mayor powers, but he pulled back. And he issued a statement that I'd like to read to you. Now, you could surmise that the reason he pulled back was because he had a change of heart. Or you could say that maybe his polling numbers weren't as good as Mayor Steinberg's. I don't know the reality, but I would say this, this is what Mayor Licardo said. "In this perilous moment, more ever, we need to unite as a city, not fight with each other. We collectively face too many threats: COVID, a severe recession, looming risks of widespread evictions, growing homelessness, and deep concerns about racial injustice and policing. And we can't have our local community distracted by a deeply divisive political campaign." So that's what is happening in the city of San Jose, which is comparable to Sacramento in many ways. I just want to finish up by saying that the way I answer the mayor's question is that the structure that best serves the people, I believe, is council manager. As far as accountability, I think we've got it in spades, and I don't see a need to change. As for accelerating the pace of progress, if you had a great mayor with strong mayor powers, you can move at a quicker clip. And that is essentially why I'm trying to keep an open mind about this. There's one other thing here, and that's about, there's no sunset in this. There's there's no revisiting in the language as written. I had asked the mayor for that in our discussions because it's a big concern to me that although I like Mayor Steinberg and feel actually that he is a very strong mayor, who is a droid politically, he's actually, I think, the best politician that I have ever known of. But, well, maybe in history there have been others, but in, you know, in recent in recent years in California, he's at the top of the heap. Daryl, your skills are admirable, and I really mean that. With these powers, you could probably do some really good stuff. But it worries me that you asked for the ability to fire the manager. We have an excellent manager, and they are hard to hire. When we went out to hire Howard Chan, we interviewed a lot of people. And I can tell you, there weren't really great candidates out there. Howard?
I would sign Howard Chan to a 10-year contract right now. How about that?
Well, you know, with that in mind, maybe you could just cut that out of the charter language. You know, I don't think you need the ability to fire a guy who you intend to keep as manager for the rest of your term. Just saying, it's a suggestion. But I would like to see a sunset, or at least term limits on the mayor, to be able to consider this proposal. You know, a lot of this is about budget. We, as Jay said, or I forget who said, but we never seem to quite have enough money to do what we want to do. And therein lies the frustration and I think the impetus to change our governance structure. You know, we haggle a lot about money on the council. We haggle about ballot box budgeting. We haggle about where to put money. That's actually our job. That's what that's what we're here to do, is to keep our budget balanced, keep it whole, keep our fiscal integrity, and get as much good work done for the city of Sacramento as we possibly can. So to that end, we chartered the Management Partners Report on efficiencies. And they made a lot of suggestions. Some of them are political dynamite. Some of them are very challenging, but those happen to be the most lucrative. So I am asking, and I alluded to it last week, but I'm asking the city manager and the city attorney to come back next week with ballot language for the repeal of binding arbitration. Now, I know that that's going to offend a lot of union members. It's a tough thing to say out loud because it's it's very existential to a lot of people who work in public safety. But I would say this, you know, we are going to be under financial stress for a few years, climbing out of this pandemic. Right now, there's no end in sight. Down years like that, the loss of binding arbitration is not going to be a big deal. When there is a lot of money available, it becomes a bigger deal. And that is when we need that bargaining power to keep our budget whole. Anyway, that's what I have to say for now, Mayor. I have three hard stops in here. And, you know, I'd love to support you, but I find that our current form of governance has actually been very effective. And I like the way the city of Sacramento was going generally. Most of our problems are a lack of funding. And that's something that there's not much we can do about in a pandemic. So thanks for listening.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Alan Warren.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think it's been stated, you know, the challenging times that we're in right now and the fact that people can't show up at City Hall and express their concern or support or their true feelings about what we're discussing, particularly the bigger issues. And so I'm going to be brief, and I'll say this. I don't blame the mayor for wanting to bring forth in a in a charter amendment that would help him do what he thinks is best for the city. You know, and I think, and it's not personal. You know, I know we have to look at not just the current situation and somebody who has been in office for 20 some odd years and have political abilities that in some ways may be very unique in politics, let alone Sacramento. So I don't, I don't blame, and I've heard it said that we should allow the people to make the decision. And I think most people are suggesting that uh, either they've already spoken or they'd like to speak again. So, uh, the two issues that, uh, and there, there are a number of, of things that I think are important. Some of my colleagues have brought them up and then a couple of others I, I'll be prepared to, to speak to next week. But the two issues I think right now for me that are very important. One is the decoupling of the economic uh, inclusive development issue, the social equity issue. I think it's extremely important because uh, we're in a moment of recognition right now where we know that there's been a lack of attention given to particularly, particular groups of people, people of color, people in urban areas, lower income people. And we should make, this council should make that a priority and we should not wait. And I don't think it needs to be coupled with the strong mayor initiative. I think the strong mayor initiative has to stand on its own merits. And I think, um, people will, again, will have a chance to decide if we so choose as a council to put it on the, on the, uh, on the ballot. And I think the economic development, social equity, inclusive development, whatever, and however we want to phrase it, we know that the time is now for us to do what's really important in our city, which is address needs that go back from the foundation of our city and in, and in a lot of ways from the foundation of our country. I am, uh, uh, an executive as well of a company and I understand what it means to say that the buck stops in a particular place. And so I also believe that the mayor is, um, if you will, a council person on steroids. The mayor is elected by representatives from each council district. So I believe he should have some enhanced authorities. Now, where we draw the line, I think is still to be determined. So I'm not going to let the cat out of the bag tonight, but I do, I think it's very important that we listen to our constituents and we try to draft, uh, as, 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 as Councilman Gera said, something that I thought was extremely important. We need to think about how best we can serve our constituents. How best we can serve Sacramento and Sacramento has to be first, not one individual. And I think collectively, we should be able to come up with a, a scenario where we can better serve our communities, where we can improve the way we govern, where we can become more efficient. And that's the type of policy I want to support. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to yield the mic back to you and allow the distinguished Mayor Pro Tim Ashby from Council District One to step up to the mic.
May I just clarify, Councilmember Warren, since we're in public here, you, you, I just want to ask you, I, I heard you to say you might prefer a separation of the equity uh, elements from the structural change. Um, can you, are you, uh, open to considering all of this as a, as a package?
Not as, not as proposed. Um, but let me just say this, Mr. Mayor, because it's still under consideration, the entire proposal, you know, I was a, uh, the, the charter amendment previously, I was a supporter. And so, I mean theoretically, there are things that I agree with. But I think, um, we need to rethink how this is brought forward so that if, if it truly is going to be a strong mayor initiative, then the strong mayor initiative needs to, to be able to stand. And we have to make it, you, you would have to make the case for it with hopefully input from your constituents on the council. And so, uh, with that being said, I'm going to hold further comment until a, a later time. And I will be prepared to speak openly about it on Tuesday. But in between now and then, there's still some work that I need to do.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Um, let me turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor, very much, uh, and to all my colleagues. Uh, I know it's a long night and long day. I think we're like seven hours into meetings here since we started at two. But Mayor, you asked us to take a look at this and use tonight for feedback and I want to join my colleagues, particularly Councilmember Jennings, in thanking the public for taking the time to call in and send us letters. And I know Councilmember Hanson said the same. It ha, it has helped me as I've looked at this initiative, uh, with new eyes for a second or third time here to try to see what's different, what's changed. And so what I did, uh, is prepare my comments for you, Mayor, and for you to consider before next week. This is, this is sort of where, where I'm at. And again, I, I know this has been said by almost everybody, but I think it's important to say for me, this isn't about personalities. I, I think everyone in Sacramento knows that I'm a big supporter of Howard Chan and I have been since the day I begged him to apply for the job and will continue to be for as long as he will help serve our city. So for me, this isn't about who's in the seat and I, I just feel like that needs to be made clear. But if we're going to take a look at the structure of governance, we have to figure out how to put it together in a way that far into the future it serves whoever's in those seats. And as Councilmember Shenier said, we've seen in our time here in just 10 years, we've seen almost the equivalent of a new city manager every other year. So a, a lot of city managers. And they, they have not all been in the class of Howard Chan. All right. So let me just start and, and move through my list quickly so that you can get it and we can be done with this meeting. First off, I, I'm not sure about the timing. There's a lot of people complaining about the timing of this. It is really hard to discuss things on Zoom and I feel for Council Vice Mayor Harris and others who said would like to have some town hall forums and hear from people. I, I do understand that and, um, that part I don't know the answer to, but I think it's worth at least considering how we, if we do put this on the ballot, how we make an aggressive agenda mayor to get out there in the community with Zoom forums and input and we, we really make sure we make ourselves available to, to hear people and also to explain to them what is and what is not on here. Secondly, I supported taking this question to the voters in the past. And you know, what you have brought forward is a little bit different, but it's close enough to the same that I, I, I'm not sure how somebody would come to a different conclusion other than maybe if, if they had, um, you know, evolved on the position over time. But for me, I was okay with this item going to the ballot for folks to weigh in before. And I am okay, again, I, I am not running for mayor. I think that's fairly well known. I have run for mayor in the past. I understand the position. And I think our structure of governance could be stronger. I have had the opportunity to serve on many national groups, uh, mostly of elected women across the country, many, many mayors that I've gotten to work with. And their structure of governance is directly tied to their results and how much they're able to achieve in their terms. And you know, I agree that right now the council primarily agrees on most things, but if you, if a city elects a mayor, a one person vision that they really want implemented, that person needs to have the ability to implement that vision. Otherwise, it's not fair to hold them accountable for not implementing a vision they said they would bring forward when they have no greater power than the other eight people on the council who don't have to vote, have to be elected across eight districts. So that, I think that's, you know, fundamentally for me, separate from whoever's in the seat, I, I think it's a conversation that needs to happen that Sacramento's all grown up and ready for and has probably been ready for, for a while. I do think we missed something here. I think appointments, which I, I think I heard at least one other person mention needs to be resolved on the front end. The mayor cannot be in a position of approving or removing appointments that are made by the council. So in other words, if District Two puts forward their name for a planning commissioner, that can't go to the mayor for approval before coming back to the council. That, that doesn't work right. That's, that there needs to be a wall around that. Now, the mayor gets to make appointments to many commissions and for those, they should originate with him and come to the council for approval, but uh, that process with the, with the mayor not being on the council needs to be removed from being that additional step. I've heard a lot of people talk about needing a benchmark for some of the equity, gender and diversity measures. I couldn't agree more. I, I actually think, Mayor, that you've made a strong argument for tying them together. I hear people saying separate them out, but what we're talking about here is a charter change. And what the mayor is presenting is the idea that we would add to the charter a level of accountability on equity and diversity. So for across gender and sexual orientation and ethnicity. And I think that is a relevant and strong charter change. We can talk about what that benchmark is. What I would add at this point is an annual audit. We already do an audit, but it's not mandated annually in the charter. I think it should be. Because even if then we don't have the benchmark as we set out, we have the measuring stick to achieve the benchmark as we discuss that as a council and create what we want that benchmark to be. But absent an audit or some measure, it's really just, um, a thought and it's a good thought, but there needs to be a mechanism. Last, this, this one here for me is very frustrating because I've, this had this happen so many times, but we have an ethics commission. Maybe it's irritating to me because I spent two years of my life writing the policy with Jay and Alan and Kevin Johnson. And we brought forward an ethics commission. It's high functioning. It has incredible individuals on it. It does great work. We did redistricting. We put together an ethics code and a sunshine provision and requirements for training for the council. Those things already exist. I think what the mayor is trying to achieve here is that right now those things exist as ordinances. This council passed them five years ago. And now we could codify them into the charter for perpetuity, meaning there would always be an ethics commission. It's not a new ethics commission. It's not a new ethics code. They already exist. That work's already been done. Sacramento is at the forefront of transparency and there is a, you heard Nick Heidorn call in earlier, Nicholas Heidorn, Legal Women Voters, Fair Political Practices. They were all involved in this. And they have a measurement of what cities have the most transparency measures and Sacramento tops that list. But codifying that into our city charter would mean that no future council could take it away, which I think is a good idea. The $40 million set aside is not a good idea. Councilmember Harris or Vice Mayor Harris and Councilmember Carr both talked about this. It's ballot box budgeting. That being said, I think Councilmember Shenier and others made a strong point that, you know, we've struggled over the past about how to make this investment in inclusive economic development and youth. And I am fine with there being something in this charter amendment that says we're going to make a meaningful investment in those areas every year and that that's going to be required of this council. But an arbitrary number like 40 million will get future councils in trouble. And I personally think is subject to some type of litigation because how we could obligate future councils into perpetuity to spend the finite amount of $40 million on that item is to me unreasonable. Uh, and there has to be a better way to do that where we create a charter amendment that requires us to look at what's meaningful and reasonable and that we do invest in youth and that we do invest in inclusive economic development, but without arbitrarily selecting a number right now. That is not a good idea. And I think it's a, a mistake to name a person. We named George Floyd in the document. I don't think we should do that. Obviously, the death of George Floyd has been extremely meaningful to our country. But in the report, his name is linked to the ethnic and gender diversity efforts. For some people, linking him to the gender diversity efforts is extremely offensive. In fact, there's an entire movement around Breonna Taylor and other women who have largely not received the type of attention that George Floyd has received. It would be far better for us to not include any names and rather to very carefully construct the narrative of what's happening in our world right now and how we're trying to respond to that. We should talk about the political climate and we should create a mandate for ourselves to address it. We should talk about wanting to end systemic oppression. We should talk about wanting to lift all communities up. But to name a name is to leave other names off the list and that is a bad idea. The city manager cannot have any control over the council agenda. That needs to be included in the charter change. In the past, uh, there were some council rules of procedure and the president and vice president of the council were identified as the people who could put items on the agenda. If the only person that the city manager is accountable to is the mayor and that city manager can control the council agenda, then you don't have the appropriate wall in place to have a checks and balances form of government. That is too much control. So you have to, you have, that has to be brought under control and it needs to be addressed. That is a major issue for me. You have to wall off the city manager from controlling council actions because the council has no ability to hold the city manager accountable. And we must at some point now or after it passes, reassess the city manager's spending authority and budget authority, as well as the council members and the mayor's staffing and budgets to make sure that they still meet the needs of what we're trying to do, which is exactly what Councilmember Gero was getting to. We need to, and Councilmember Warren, we need to be able to serve our constituency. And if we can't go to the city manager to say, we're going, we need help with this, we need to have another mechanism to do that, whether it's through the city attorney or through our own individual council budgets. There also needs to be a discussion. We, last time, when Measure L failed, uh, the, the mayor at the time asked for an additional, I think dozen positions in his office, which we granted. Those may not be necessary if the mayor's office is now controlling the entire 5,000 person city staff. So that would need to be a discussion point and potentially a way to come up with the funding, by the way, for the ninth council district. I am not sure that this achieves the accountability that some people in the community are looking for. I hope people understand that Mayor Steinberg has actually dialed it back a bit here and given more authority to the six members of the council than previously was given solely, uh, to the mayor. The mayor would replace the council as the hiring and firing authority for the city manager. But ultimately, the strongest grip hold for the city would lie in six council members who agree on anything. There is nothing that they couldn't undo of the mayor, other than the hiring and firing of the city manager. Anything else that the mayor wanted to achieve, vetoed, put forward, could be done or undone by a vote of six. I think that's important to remember because that's the true power of this ordinance. I do think the mayor's accessibility would be an issue. It would not be with Darrell. Let me be clear. We all know Darrell will be out there and available. But we also all know that not every mayor is like that. And I don't know about setting a minimum bar of two meetings per year. It's probably better to put in language that says that the council will hold the mayor accountable for being regularly available to the public. Because what you don't want is exactly what I, one of you, I think Councilmember Carr said, for the council to become the place where people come to complain about the mayor, but the mayor's not there. Because that makes it hard for the council to function and for the council to move forward when the mayor needs to be, needs to hear from the folks that, that are trying to get a message to him. So i- in local, in, in state politics with a governor or a president or whatever that might work, but in local politics, people need access to their mayor. And we can't assume that they'll, they'll all act like the current Mayor Steinberg does. So there needs to be some type of accountability there that the mayor will make themselves available to the public. The Brown Act piece is an issue. I understand that the mayor's no longer part of the legislative body once he's removed, but he's still part of the legislative process since he has veto power. So somehow we have to at least put in language, and I think Councilmember Hanson talked about this too. There has to at least be language that holds the mayor accountable for, for limiting his undue influence of the council. We have that now, uh, as Councilmember Vice Mayor Harris talked about relative to the city manager. We would need to extend it to the mayor because you can't have a mayor who walks up and down the hall and collects votes even when he's not on the council. So some mayors may try to do that. Those are my suggestions. Here's a quick hit list of things that I think are important for people to understand. All the ordinances have to be initiated by the council. Mayor can't even initiate an ordinance if the council tells him no. He can ask one of us to, but if the whole council says, no, we're not taking that forward, it has no venue to put anything on the council agenda. That's important to note. If the, if the council, future council wants to freeze out that mayor, they certainly would be able to. S H R A would no longer report to the mayor. They would only report to the council. So all of the housing projects, all the things that we do with S H R A, those would be through the council. Any land use decision that doesn't include an ordinance change would come through the council. And even if a land use decision did include an ordinance change, think about McKinley Village. The mayor would not weigh in on that. That would be a council decision. So th- those are hu, though some of those are some of the biggest, longest meetings we've had and things that the council would hold all the power, all the cards to.
Angelique, I think there's a question, uh, in, in the ordinance put forward by the mayor, it, it said that he, It, it said that he may, I think it said something like he may, uh, uh, you know,
He can only get involved. Yeah, he can only get involved in a land use decision where there's an ordinance change triggered by that land use decision. So in where we're just deciding about a land use decision, like a conditional use permit, which is what was that at stake at McKinley Village? The mayor wouldn't be involved in the dialogue.
Well, and that was a little, that was some of the clarity that I was hoping to get, you know, as we got into this further, but I'm going to let you finish and then,
Okay.
you know, we can wrap up, hopefully.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, ballot proposals initiatives come from the council. Anything that this council wanted to put on the ballot, they could do that. A ninth council seat does help. In terms of gender equity, it does help. And thi- this is something that people talk about across, across the country, that when you add more representation to the city, you get more diversity. And I think that's a good thing. No tiebreaker for the mayor, he took it out. That's important. That would have been too much power and authority. The council retains all other charter officers. Everybody but the city manager still reports to us. Here's a big one. The council still retains all the authority over the employee contract negotiations. It'll still run through the council. There's no change to that in this ordinance. If you didn't see it named in the five or six pages that you got from Matt Ruiac, it stays the same, which means the council controls it. Okay, here's my last three items for you just to consider for people to understand. Here are three things that were taken out of this proposal that were in KJ's proposal that I, I, I don't feel super strongly about, but other people may, and we may all want to keep our ears open on this. One, term limits. Two, a sunset provision. Given that we're adding a ninth council district, that only works if we do twelve years. Otherwise, it, it doesn't work. And lastly, in KJ's proposal, the mayor had the ability to hire and fire department heads. And in this proposal, Daryl does not. So lots to think about. My inclination is to support putting it on the ballot. However, obviously, I have a list of things, Mayor. I'd like answers from you and your team on before we take that vote next week. Thank you for letting me share those thoughts.
Thank you, uh, for your thoughtful comments. Um, and thank you to all the members for your thoughtful comments. Thank you to the public. Um, I, um, a- am taking it all in and have listened very carefully. And it is obvious to me that, um, the public is engaged. The members are engaged. Uh, and that we have a lot of work to do over the next number of days to be responsive to all that, uh, I have heard and we have hea- heard today. And we will endeavor, uh, to do so. I know it's late. I just want to make a couple of final remarks, um, because I think it is important that I do respond to some of what I heard today so that you know, uh, where I stand. On, a- and I know that while part of my message here is that we must broaden the core responsibilities and core functions of our city. That on, as a matter of principle, and I appreciate Vice Mayor Harris's position of this, a matter of principle, I do support binding arbitration. Because I come from a labor background where when you take away the right of any labor organization and I respect collective bargaining to strike, then you have to find a way to balance the, um, the bargaining relationship between management and labor. And public safety officials do not have the right to strike because that would be unsafe into our, to our communities. So I just want to be clear where I stand there. In terms of the mayor having to appear in a town hall meeting twice a year, I'll tell you one thing, I want to take that out. Because a mayor ought to be responsible for appearing for the public a lot more than that. And of course, that's my way. And I appreciate the acknowledgement. It always has been my way. But I don't wa- would not want to give a false impression that two times would somehow satisfy, uh, some legal requirement. I want to think about all of this. And of course, speak with not only as many colleagues as I can legally here, but with the community, not only the members of my coalition who, uh, have helped me bring this idea forward, but with the broader community as well. I would add this, I would just say to some of the critics, I'm the one who's suggesting putting, uh, racial, gender and ethnic equity into the city charter. Because I think that is important, as, as a couple of members mentioned. Doing it by ordinance, which I agree with Jay Chenier and others, let's put this, let's put these requirements in ordinance now and take the time to flesh them out even before the election. But putting them in the charter will mean that they will last, uh, long beyond any particular city council. Of all the questions I've heard tonight, I want to go back to what Councilmember Getta said because it's what strikes me and what continues to be my motivation for wanting to consider this. And the question is, how will this affect the day-to-day lives of our residents and our neighborhoods? And this is what I believe. And reasonable people, smart people can differ. If your life is pretty much okay in the city of Sacramento, if you're grown up here and you're part of the long tradition of Sacramento and its beautiful tree-lined neighborhoods and you're employed and you're doing well, then I think this form of government is probably just fine. But if you are part of a community that has been traditionally left behind historically by virtue of your zip code, by virtue of your race, by virtue of your gender, by virtue of your economic circumstances, then I would argue strongly that this form of governance is not as responsive to the change that is being demanded as it could be. And it has nothing to do, again, with the individuals or the personalities. But here is the fundamental reality of our city governance today. That is, it, its primary responsibility is to assure the health of the city organization. Its primary responsibility is not to invest its resources into the neighborhoods and the community, especially the neighborhoods and communities that have been long left behind. Ask yourself this. Why has there never been a consistent economic equity agenda in our city? It is late, but the Measure U story, I'm sorry. It is searing for me because you heard tonight that I am, as the elected mayor, who went out there and got the extra half cent, which I, ironies of ironies, has saved the city budget, has saved the city budget and saved us from layoffs. But we said if we've got the extra half cent, that we would invest it in our communities. And everything that I have tried to do and that many of you tried to do has been a workaround. And it has always taken second place or third place compared to the health and the organization, the health of the city organization itself, as opposed to the communities. When we got eighty-nine million dollars of CARES funding, it took strong executive leadership to say this money should be focused on economic equity. But that should be the natural way we go about doing it. When it comes to homelessness, an issue that continues to frustrate us as your mayor, I have succeeded in bringing more money to this city from many sources to address this problem aggressively. And yet it takes forever to get anything built and done. Now, that's not the fault of anybody. But homelessness, just like economic development and economic equity, in some ways has been kind of a side priority and a side issue as opposed to a core responsibility of our city. And thus, progress has been harder than maybe it could be. This is, um, either those who've argued that this is the wrong time to do this. We've had charter commissions. I've heard a number of suggestions about eliminating the position of elected mayor. So first, I've heard that tonight. I'm not sure that time is the problem here. As Steve Hanson said, people have strong feelings about these sets of issues. And I actually think that's a great thing. Because a healthy city should be able to debate the way we debated tonight and the way we listen to people tonight. And I promise you, I'm going to take all this input. I'm going to reflect on it very deeply. I ask you to do, all do the same. And in the end, there's only one thing that matters to me and I know to all of you. What is going to be best for our city? And for me, I would add, what is going to be best for the people of this city who too often are left behind? Those of you who, some of my fiercest critics, especially younger people who don't know my history, I understand I'm from another generation. But I know what's in my heart. And I know why I came back to this city after serving fourteen years in the legislature, including six as president of the senate, why I chose to run for mayor of this city that I love. I just would like myself and future mayors to have a few more tools to be able to address equity in a real and meaningful way. I look forward to, um,
I don't want to cut you off, but I just got a text. Would it be, I know this is on for discussion tonight. Would it be okay, uh, if I put forward a motion? Because the city attorney would feel more comfortable. That just says to come back next week and incorporate as much input as you can from what you heard from all of us tonight.
I, I would happily, happily, uh, support that motion. Okay. Uh, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay, let's call the roll. And again, I just want to thank everyone for the substantive and heartfelt discussion. I'm proud of our city. Thank you. Let's call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren? Councilmember Warren?
Oh, yes. Mm-hmm.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Sure.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes, to come back next week and incorporate, uh, the conversation.
That is correct. Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Getta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Carr?
Sure, bring it back as soon as possible. I'm waiting till Thursday night.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Okay. Um, is there any, are, are there, uh, is there public testimony for items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two callers.
Aye.
May I have the first caller, please?
Council comments, too.
I've got one item on council comments.
So do I.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay. There hasn't been equity addressed because police unions have bought the mayor and council off in previous years. You lied about the community investment. Even you straw manned what people are worried about with regards to the Brown Act. Said we were worried that the mayor would reach individual agreements with the majority on the council. Not that he would tell them what the others had said and create a de facto consensus. Those are two different things. And if you don't know better, I'm dismayed. But I'm betting you do and you're just misrepresenting it to confuse. Also, you wouldn't have to meet with people as often. That's the other issue because people wouldn't feel like they could provide input to him at regular intervals. And we all know how he disdains listening to the public. I've seen him manipulate the schedule to try and minimize our input. Also, there is no way that he didn't approve of the two meetings per year. So Daryl is being disingenuous there. Split it. There is no reason for equity and strong mayor to be together. There is no intrinsic need for one to have the other. Additionally, I'd like to ask that you put the strong rent control ballot measure on the ballot, which over forty-seven thousand signatures were gathered. We were previously undermined by lobbyist Hanson as he ensured the real, his real interest maintained. In this time of COVID, of mass unemployment, of lack of health insurance, of likely mass evictions to come shortly, this isn't the time to make it even more likely that people will be evicted due to rising rents. Evictions in a time like this will make the pandemic worse, not better. Rising rents will result in evictions. Even if this weren't an issue, we need rent control due to the out-of-control rents in the city. It's now considered a deal if you can find a one-bedroom, four-hundred-square-foot apartment for one thousand dollars. You're lucky. That's unreasonable, especially during a time when we are already short on housing stocks for lower-income people and money keeps being given to multimillion or billionaire developers to make high-end rentals. We need affordable housing. I don't want to see another high-end development until I see substantive affordable housing developed so that all workers can afford to live without the necessity of an hour or longer commute. I ask you to respect the thousands of people that wanted the ballot measure that they signed for, not the weak sauce that Stephen put forward at the behest of his employers. Also, Angelique, six council members is a lot. Don't act like it's an easily, easily attainable figure.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
I, I agree with everything the previous caller said. Uh, one, I'm going to grade, uh, a couple of city council members. Uh, Larry Carr, who I normally don't, don't, uh, agree with a lot, gets an A plus for his comments. He made the best case against strong mayor than anybody. And, uh, Mayor Steinberg gets an F. And as far as, uh,
Point of order, for public comment on matters not on the agenda, the callers are calling on matters related to the agenda. I'd ask that they stick to matters not on the agenda.
If that was Steve Pat, I'm glad he's out of here. Uh, I'd vote for Katie Valz-Wayla. Because I think she's done more for the ci- uh, District Four before she came into city council than, uh, Steve Patson has done as a city council member. Uh, as far as, okay, I'll take it off the, matters not on the agenda. You know the problem with Sacramento City? What's prob- what's wrong, what's wrong with Sacramento? It's the city council. They will not listen to the public. We need rent control now. Because if you're on SSI and you're paying about a thousand dollars, that's more than your SSI check. Give it through your thick skull that city council is not listening to the public. And I will be a thorn in your side as, as long as I'm, uh, alive. Until we get a, a city council that is, that represents the people. And as far as, uh, Angelique Ashby saying, we need more women on the city council. At all the time she says that, well, we're getting one. Katie Valz-Wayla, who is a lot better than Angelique Ashby or anyone on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Mayor Steinberg, I have no more callers.
We, we did have a member or two had a, had a comment. Um, so, of course, uh, Councilmember Getta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, really quick, uh, if I could ask the city manager or, uh, the appropriate staff to come back to the council and update us on Project Home Key. And we're, uh, I think it'd be a great opportunity for the city to be the first round of funding on that. Uh, ki- I'd like to know kind of where we are on the staff applications, uh, what projects we're pursuing, um, and, uh, if we need to have any kind of special session or discussion on it, uh, but, you know, in time to be effective here.
Absolutely. We'll have a staff coming back with, uh, with an update on that project.
Anybody else? I, I want to, Rick Jennings, are you going to adjourn in, in memory of, uh, council member? Please. Steve Hanson, did you have a comment quick? I'm sorry, let's go to Steve Hanson quick.
Yeah, uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a request, uh, for the law, for the log, um, that the city manager and city attorney work on creating a permitting process for, uh, projects like Safe Ground, um, uh, to work with the council. Um, I don't know if, uh, the attorney and, uh, city manager want to develop something and bring it to Law &amp; Ledge, but I know you, uh, called for the embrace of this, other council members, and we've been working productively to find sites. Uh, the lack of a permitting process is creating a challenge. And so, um, hopefully, we can put one in place, uh, through, through whatever, um, policymaking process is appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. City manager? Take note of that. Is there any other member before I turn it to Rick Jennings for adjourn in memory? And maybe, yes, go ahead, Rick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Sacramento lost an icon, uh, a champion of Sacramento and definitely a champion for the pocket area. Eighty-four-year-old Robbie Waters passed away. Eighty-four-year-old Robbie Waters passed away a few days ago. He made a significant difference in the city of Sacramento, starting with the Sacramento Police Department, moving on to the Sacramento Sheriff's Department, and also being a 16-year member of this council, Sacramento City Council. Father of three, incredible loving husband, and, and just an incredible man that dedicated his life to making a difference. He lost his battle, um, to COVID a few days ago, and on behalf of the family, um, I just want to close this meeting out in his honor. Person that we will always remember, his life and his legacy. And, uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, everyone knows what a great man he was.
Rick, I, thank you for bringing Robbie up. I just wanted to say, uh, I only got to serve with him for a little while, and I only got to do it because back then, if you won in the spring, you got to come on a little bit earlier. We, that rule has changed since, so, but I got to be there for a little bit of time with Robbie. And a couple of things about him. First of all, what an absolute character, just an, an icon of Sacramento, a, a fun guy who really loves his community and his hardware store, and he loved serving Sacramento so much that he served on boards and commissions even after being a council member. He was my friend. He was the first sitting city council member to endorse me. And I remember Robbie explaining to me how the parking worked and how, you know, he- healthcare worked here and all the things about just actually doing the job like a new job. And I will miss him, but I'm so grateful that he served on the council and that I did get to spend some time with him. Thanks, Rick, for honoring him tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to say too, you know, Robbie, uh, I got a chance to meet him some 20 years ago, but really got a chance to, to know him when I decided to run for city council, and he was one of the first people that came over to, uh, say he thought it was a good idea to support me and to give me some counsel. And so, um, you know, I think Sacramento is better off because Robbie Waters served in elective office. And, you know, I, uh, I was sad to see that he had passed, but, uh, also knowing that he was here, he did leave a legacy, and again, I think all of us have benefited from his, uh, his, uh, being a public servant here in the city of Sacramento. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, and I, I really, um, give more time to remembering, uh, Robbie Waters because he was a Sacramento original. And, um, you know, I, he was my seatmate for four years, and man, we were different, um, politically and otherwise. And, you know, and at first it was a little awkward and, and we became great friends. And, um, because he was somebody who looked at you and judged you, not based on your politics, but whether or not he thought you were, uh, you know, decent, decent person. And he was very decent and, uh, and caring about people. And so was his wife Judy and his kids and, and grandkids, and, uh, it is a real loss. Thank you, Rick Jennings, for...
Yeah, if I, can I add two cents on that? I mean...
Yeah.
He, he was a gentleman, you know? He was always willing to sit down and have a conversation. Uh, I got to know him a little bit too when we were working on building the Pocket Greenhaven Library that's named after. That was a huge thing for him. So he'll be missed. He, he was a good person. We might not have agreed politically on anything, but, uh, always a good person and willing to have a chat.
And that library will always bear his name, so to speak.
Yep, absolutely. His wife Judy...
I can aim into that as well, because Robbie and I, we've never discussed politics. The whole time that I've known him, not a political discussion has ever come up. But Robbie supported me in every election that I ran, ran in. He even shared his, uh, campaign list, his donation list with, this with me. And it was a pleasure to go to the, uh, anniversary party that he and Judy celebrated at the, uh, Elks, uh, building. And, uh, I just can't say enough about that guy. I really, really enjoyed his company and I appreciated his friendship, and he's a loss not only to me, but for the rest of the city.
I want to, I want to just let everybody know, I didn't, I didn't talk, tell his wife Judy that I was gonna do this tonight, and I didn't tell his children, Darren, Dee Earl, and Danny, that I was gonna do this tonight. But I'm hoping that they will get word of it and, uh, they will feel that we all did him justice, letting the world know what a great man he was, what a great man he is, and that his legacy will live on forever.
In memory of Robbie Waters. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.